Hi, George.
Just a diamond.
Yes, you are. Thank you.
Turn these on. I think that's on, isn't it?
Yeah, you can touch it and see if it's on.
Yeah.
Yeah, for sure.
Are you up?
Yeah, whenever you're ready.
Okay. I'm gonna call the meeting order, the planning commission, the Bath Township at six P M. And it's July the twenty second. Can I get approval for the agenda or any changes?
Move approval.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Anyone have any disclosures of interest or conflicts of interest, sorry, yeah. I hear none, move on. Don't think there's really any controversial topics. No public comment, because there's no public here. Minutes of July the eighth. I would like to, and old business, item two, between two and three, some note that there's no public present.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
Because it doesn't look like there was any action taken in.
Yeah, I get what you're saying, because the public hearing was open and then next line item was closed. You just wanted to call it out.
No one spoke or something.
Right, thank you. And is there any way where we talk about communication from a concerned resident? Item twenty, under, what is that, the Q pack people? The very last item before capital improvements? Is there any way to include that in the video? Because I think a lot of people watch the video, but they don't. They knew there was a communication, but they don't know there's content of it. Is there any way to combine that somehow?
I can ask Taylor about that. I wouldn't, I wouldn't think so, like, have the, like, a split screen where you see the comment, like, on the video when you watch it. I feel like that'd be difficult.
Yeah. Usually in the board of trustees meetings, they just read the email or summarize it.
If anyone wants to see it, it's public record.
Yeah.
We have it, if you could FOIA the document.
Yeah, they could do that.
Or you could just, if you email, we all email it to you, you don't have to FOIA.
I've got a couple of things. On the first page, Crane was absent twice.
Did you miss twice?
And then we gave, uh, gave George a new title.
Where?
Where?
On the approval of agenda. He's vice chap or something like that.
Typical. All right, it's typical, yeah. Okay, those are easy.
And then, just in general, I haven't got this cleaned up yet. Is motioned and moved.
Mm-hmm.
All the motions in here should be changed to moved. Like, in the minutes, first one, Commissioner Colter motioned to approve, it should be moved to approve, you don't motion anything.
Yeah, we've talked about that a lot.
Yeah, and it's all the way through this.
Okay.
One here. Under old business, the rezoning. I think we need to put in where that rezoning is. And we know where it is, but even by reading these minutes, I don't know that we're talking about the one on off Chandler Road.
Yeah, we can throw the parcel numbers in there.
Well, parcel numbers are, even though it's more descriptive, if I'm reading, if I just read the minutes, the parcel number doesn't, parcel number doesn't mean a thing to me.
You want us to say, like...
Just where is it? East of Chandler, south of Club Course or something.
Okay.
And isn't it now zoned agricultural?
It's own rural, yeah.
Rural, yeah.
Rural, it says low density.
Oh, yes, problem low density, that's not correct, it should be rural.
So it's rural, okay.
Yeah, it's rural.
So we don't have agriculture, it's just rural?
Yep.
Yeah, township, okay. But that's true for the whole township, then, there's no, no agricultural zone.
Nope.
Okay.
It's rural.
And, yeah, rural to medium density residential, I think I see the word residential in there.
Yeah, medium density residential.
Then. On the new business, talking about the moratorium on storage facilities. Need to make it clear, I think, in here that, we talked about what the board agenda item was, but I didn't say what it was. And then down, further down, it talks about commissioners discuss the board trustees' actions concerning the moratorium. They didn't take any action.
Yeah, I mean technically.
Yeah, I think we put that all in number one, just say that the planner highlighted the board trustees' agenda items concerning the planning commission request for a moratorium.
Okay.
Next sentence can just say, no action was taken by the board.
Yeah, but I guess a directive was given.
But I didn't say that in the minutes.
Yeah, I agree.
If I went back and read the minutes, there doesn't say anything about that in there.
Yeah, sure, but there, you know, Brenda plays the game too that we play, which is being broad versus specific.
Yeah, and I think, that's kind of the thing that I think bugs me a little bit about these minutes, is that there are places in here when they say somebody discussed something, but doesn't say what you discussed.
Yeah, again, that's always the dilemma.
Yeah.
Between...
Too much and too little.
Too much and too little.
Right, yeah, right.
I mean, there is always video available.
Yep.
Yeah.
But I...
To clarify.
Largely, I agree with everything you said, and I think we'll just clean that up instead of action is probably not the correct word to use there, for sure, I don't think that's arguable.
No.
But that's a number of things you want us to, like, take your markups and bring this back. He wants to take your markups and approve with edits.
You guys are competent to mark it up, I'm sure.
Yeah, I can always email it to you right too, before we send it, so you can see it.
And then on, on the last page, under... Report, not report from planner, but one before the report from planner. Initial survey input discussion?
Mm-hmm.
It says here, planner role to discuss the potential for the restatement of July twenty second. Restatement, what does that mean?
Uncancel?
Yeah, something like that, because I don't know it.
reinstatement of, I get what you're saying, the reinstatement of, yeah, uncanceling, that's again where it's like...
May rein, may reinstatement maybe. This is restatement, reinstatement maybe.
I'm fine with whatever word you want to use.
Just something, because then down at five, it does say that Jason moved to uncancel the meeting, that's what we did, uncancel.
Uncancel, could fit there better, and have a uniform. But here, give me your markups.
You're gonna have to skim through, I will just...
Okay.
Not done yet.
Oh, okay. Feeling really self-conscious right now.
Like the last one on the planning commission member comments. Planner role to answer the commissioner's inquiry. What was inquiry?
Same, same thing.
Well, I guess the first one, commissioner's inquired on legality of private roads used by the public. And there was an answer given, but what was the answer?
It's the same thing, it's, we're trying to be broad versus specific.
Yeah. Some of these comments in here, because I went back and changed some stuff, you can kind of fight your ways with that.
We'll make the edits and we'll send you an email, but I think all of them are fine. I can't debate any of them. What do you, what, Chair, what do you want us to do? That's a lot, though.
What's, what's the commissioner wanted to... Is that a lot? Do you want to have Miles bring it back again, or?
Doesn't matter to me, no. I trust in that...
Well, somebody want to make a motion then?
I move to approve with the changes.
Okay, thanks, George, is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor say aye.
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 Anyone opposed?
Epstein. I wasn't here.
Okay, that's reasonable, you weren't here.
We'll send you a copy, just to make sure.
Thanks, Miles, thanks, Ray.
Thanks, guys, no, I appreciate, I want to say I appreciate it too, you guys always giving us a good look, it just, it helps us maintain our standards. The, particularly the move and the motion thing, we've talked about that a lot.
Yeah, we, we talk about that every once in a while.
Okay.
Okay.
You shouldn't have a wife that used to be chair of this estate organization or something like that.
She could be our secretary. Is it worth it to be a conflict with having her get on the planning commission once an opening becomes available?
Miles, you got any communications you want to share with us?
None at this time. I think we'll have some for our next meeting, I would just add so.
I imagine, yeah. All right, let's move on to this packet we've got concerning the community outreach, or whatever you want to call it, comprehensive plan, I guess.
Chair, do you care if I just kick off, kind of?
You know, let me kind of make a, kind of make an opening statement. We're having a meeting here to have a discussion about different ideas of how to survey and what questions to ask. And I really don't expect a consensus on anything, quite honestly. But I think we should all be free to ask questions or make improvements or comments about how we're gonna conduct the survey. And send it back to what the people that we hired to actually formulate this for us, do a rewrite or whatever you want to call it. And then we'll take another look at it, I think that's a good plan. And in the meantime, you know, if you got anything to say, be sure and say it, don't, don't think there's a wrong or right answer. Because I don't expect to get consensus on hardly any of the items, quite honestly. I think we ought to have good discussion. Go ahead, Miles.
Yeah, no, I think that's all, I was gonna say something similar, so I appreciate that, Chair. There's about thirty-four questions here, the minute, the meeting tonight can go like about three hours, so if you do that math, that's like five minutes a question.
Yep.
So we'd really be moving to come to consensus on all of these, to that end. You know, I, I don't think tonight can be or should be like the end all be all, if you see something later, you just want to, if you have like a lot. Either before or after this discussion tonight, I mean, we can even take a marked up email and just forward it to them. I do want to back up the Chair's point of, you know, hey, they do this all the time, they're paid to do this, they do this in communities for a living. I don't think there's ever existed or will ever exist a perfect survey. So I don't think we should let the perfect be the enemy of the good on this one. And I think it is impossible for all seven of you to probably agree like, oh yeah, this is the perfect survey. With that being said, me and the interns did go through the survey and we had our, recreated some of our own edits, so I'll pass these out. To you guys on like, just what our high level thoughts were. Which you can see, we have a lot of opinions, just like I'm sure you guys do on how to do stuff. There were certain areas where we just had, we thought like five questions in a row were good, and there were certain areas where you can see a lot of red. But yeah, so Chair, back to you, however you want to do this.
You got the edited one?
Oh, that's different than this.
That's different. I think this is different than what this is in the packet.
As our redline copies, we didn't put them in the packet because we don't want to steer this, we want you guys to steer it. We gave it to you, just because it's your thoughts.
Opening shot.
We didn't put it in the packet, though, we wanted you guys to just evaluate it, what do you think?
That's a good plan.
We were, we were, and I'll just say, like, going through it, I thought theirs was fine. Like, I think if we sent it out how they had it, we would get some good info back. We're just trying to tweak it.
Yeah, I agree.
I guess the question I've got is, what kind of information are we looking for here? Because some of these questions, to me, are way too detailed for a comprehensive plan. Like parking on Main Street, that's not a comprehensive plan question, period.
Well, we kind of thought that too, because we were like, so if we get to the parking on the Main Street... Well, Chair, how you want to do it, yeah, you want to go, yeah.
Yeah, let's go question by question.
Yeah, I think so.
I think that we jump all over the place, we're gonna have too many problems.
Grace's comment still stands, right? Because that was just an example.
Like a general.
Yeah, that's fine, that's fine.
Well, no, 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 in terms of, I, I, do you think it's worthwhile to have sort of a leading conversation of...
General feedback?
What is it that we want to accomplish? What are the big questions that we have as a body that a survey will help us get to?
Okay.
And then, you know, whether or not th- those questions exist in this particular survey.
Okay.
Yeah, I guess my first comment was just that, we need to have something at the front, we got introduction. But to me, we need to put in, what is the purpose of this survey? It says, develop a comprehensive plan update.
And to most people, they won't know what that means.
They don't know what it means, no.
No.
Give a little bit more depth to that.
I mean, depth or shalliness?
Yeah, it's almost you want more shalliness, yeah, I agree with that. Because the layperson, their top plan, it should just say like, hey, we're interfering in the survey to gain insight or an opinions from the general public.
Because presumably it's gonna inform the strategic plan, and so perhaps as a document.
A supporting document.
And so it's, the township is aiming to make improvements in its planning, future planning, and not talk about the comprehensive plan.
Yeah, I don't think people are really gonna relate to what a comprehensive plan means.
Okay.
Yeah, I think you could probably just remove that whole thing and just like make it, this survey will be used to guide development in the township or something like that.
Or something to do with long-term, future planning.
Yep.
And types of development, kind of the development we want.
All right, I'm just putting a note, too much makes simple.
Yeah.
Well, so, let's, let's expand upon that a little bit.
Okay.
The, the reading level is a little bit high for all members of our community.
All right, reading level's high.
And so, that and then the use of the ranking and the multiple choice, but using difference, you know, a five-point versus three-point multiple choice.
Yeah.
There's a, quite a cognitive burden to this survey, when you add that to the link.
When we get to the questions they did provide me, you can see on the screen how we'll actually interact here. So, just to show you how.
Well, good luck for the senior center.
Yeah.
Also, if you're, sorry, I would say, if you're doing something like that on your phone, real pain in the butt.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, you're gonna have two.
Well, when we get to those questions, we can get more specific on that.
You're gonna have it loose, these two groups of people, you're gonna have...
Right, but you can't see all the choices at once.
So, Miles, just in terms of, like...
General feedback.
There's a, we'll, we'll have like, sort of global feedback and then...
Yeah, what's, we're going general right now, so what's, what's other general feedback?
I felt some of the introductions were a little too wordy. Maybe that was the cognitive level that Jason was getting at. I thought they could be a little more concise.
Okay, like, these things, like at the beginning of housing, it gives you like two paragraphs?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, you're gonna have, some people are gonna want to take this online, and some people are gonna want a hard copy, I can tell you that right now.
Yeah, so I'm gonna say again, like, too long makes simple introductions.
Yeah, that was my first comment, the, the survey itself was too long.
And that was one of our thoughts too, even in ours, we were cutting out content for the sake of just shoring it up, like, under, we'll get to specific questions.
Yeah, let's get to that as we move along.
Okay, what are the, what's our general feedback?
Again, there's a maximum on surveys to get, because at some point, you lose them.
Yep.
So, it, it, it's been a long time since I was in that class. It's like fifteen questions.
Yeah, depends on the context, and so if you have a captured audience, you give a little bit more time. Sometimes questionnaires like this, that have like a personal, like, if it's like, you know, a questionnaire on like a product that you don't really care about, like, you got like three questions, right? Something like this that has something about where you live, you get a little bit more time.
Personal impact.
But I think a lot of this can be, you know, you said thirty-four questions?
Mm-hmm.
Depending, I mean, these are long questions, right? That's part of the challenge, and so, the idea here that I see is, you want to have enough examples for them, to trigger them to think about it, the question, the way that you want them to think about it, as opposed to go off the left field.
Yeah.
I think we can pare down, and it looks like Miles and team have done some of that, pare down those items into kind of a core set of maybe four, five.
Yeah, we, we, they had like eight, we're like, we gotta get to sound four.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So what's the goal on the time? I mean, what's the...
What planners usually taught in schools, like twenty questions is always a goal. And often, you'll get like the twenty hard question, and like five, you can probably plus that with like five demographic questions, like twenty-five total. Thirty, thirty-four is definitely getting on the long end.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, if you spend a minute or two per question, it's a lot of time.
Yeah, it's a lot of time. I mean, we'll be charging our iPads at these events.
Especially ones where they want you to rank it, like the first question, when there's just three reasons, they put somebody, they want you to rank eleven different things.
I mean, that's this one, yeah.
That takes, well, it's not the first one, it's one.
Yeah, it's this one that's on the screen right now, it's like number six or something. Okay, anymore, because time is a thing, we got a lot to go through, anymore, just high level, overall thoughts?
So, yes, I, and this relates to how, the length of the survey, one of the challenges with a long survey like this, you're gonna get people who get about halfway or a quarter of the way and they're gonna bail.
Yeah, we get that, yeah.
Yeah.
So, because where you live is so important, I think we should front load that.
Yep, agreed.
Well, that's a good point.
Get the demographic questions out front.
Right in the front, yeah.
Do you have a picture of, of a map we kind of used to break this up, this, I think location is key, because depending on where you live, is how you're gonna answer these questions.
No, we're actually, the map one, I'll have to get back with you guys, we were on the phone with them yesterday and we were workshopping that, depending on the survey software, right now, they're on Survey Monkey. Survey Monkey doesn't let you just like drop a pin. Now, like, with the non-moderized map and the map we did for the broadband study, it was nice, because both of those let us just like drop a point, and then in order to like dissolve the information, so we weren't giving out like, here's the address of where everyone that took the survey is. We just create a heat map on the backend for the report.
Yeah.
Um, Survey Monkey makes you, and it uploads some kind of geography to break down the township. The problem with that is, then it becomes like a multiple choice question, you live in quadrant one, two, three, or four.
Yeah.
And so like the larger scale you go, the less useful the information is, but the fewer options, so quicker the question is, so it's like a double edged sword. So, we, there, I think they're actually currently, they're looking to see how they can balance that, and they might end up going with like a Qualtrics instead of a Survey Monkey, because Qualtrics will let you drop a point.
Yeah, but to Kate's point, if people are on their telephone, that can get really challenging.
Yeah, like dropping a point.
What I would do in this situation is to give people the choice of putting, dropping a pin or putting in their street name and block.
Yeah.
And so, and let them choose one or the other.
Yeah.
Or do both.
Yeah, as long as that's feasible with whatever survey, I, that's always how I've seen in the past, there's a map option and enter address option.
Yeah.
And usually you won't, you don't have to enter your home, you can enter a street and it will just put it located somewhere on that street, you're like, ah, close enough.
Yeah.
Well, do we have any streets that would cut across multiple districts? I mean, Perclake, I would imagine.
Upstate Road.
Yeah, there's a couple, I mean, Stan Road's another one that is divided across the township. But usually if you just put, I mean, people can figure it out, they can put an address closer to their address. So I don't know, but I, I think that is the best way.
But I think, yeah, speaking of maps, is one of the maps, I think we should have a map of, of the gravel road, and first, change the word dirt to gravel.
Okay.
For this whole thing.
Oh, yeah.
But I think, because people that do this survey aren't gonna know where, I mean, I don't know where all the gravel roads are.
Yeah, but that, I think that, I would argue, I, I will push back on, change the word to gravel, agreed, no, no contest there.
Absolutely.
You put a map in, it's like, then we go back to, are we giving too much leading information? Because that builds out.
I don't, I don't think...
You think that's easy?
I don't think it's...
Well, you ask the person, which, which gravel road should be paved? I don't know where the gravel roads are.
I don't think that should even be a question.
Maybe it shouldn't be.
Yeah, maybe it shouldn't be a question, but yeah, that's, I would say that too, like, I, because length's a thing, right? So if you say, no gravel roads, or if you put in the map with the gravel roads, just one more thing, building out length, and, like, I think the answer you give for a lot of people on that one is strong enough. Right? But if you're, if you're not showing the opinion, why don't you say none, next?
So, I mean, there's, I mean, we're deviating from...
Yeah, or, or general, sorry. All right.
I don't know why we have the gravel road question on there at all, because...
We'll, I, I think, we'll get to specifics.
Yeah, let's go now.
Anymore, anymore general, you want to go to specifics?
No, let's go through question to question.
Okay, all right, cool. All right, question one, what are your top three reasons for living in Bath Township? They give a bunch of examples, any thoughts?
I thought low taxes. Quite honestly, that was one of...
You think that should be a reason?
Yeah.
I think that's fine.
I was gonna suggest that as well.
I think there's too many choices myself.
Oh, yeah. What choices can we eliminate?
I'd eliminate B. I'd eliminate D. I'd eliminate...
C and F kind of go together.
Yep.
So you could cancel C.
Yep.
Okay. Same as F.
I'd eliminate other.
Or put it in parentheses next to the school thing.
No, I, I, I like an other.
Yeah, so I think the other should be a larger text box that's separate from this. Because when you add it as an option, the text box is like, only invites like three words.
Okay.
And so if you add another question, not that I want to add another question, but I feel like this is one of the most important questions for the survey. To, to, like, are there other reasons why you want, you, you like living in Bath?
I think we can get rid of K, nobody is gonna say they live in Bath.
Okay.
Yeah, that's a good point.
What if, Jason, if they, because of the survey logic, what if they click other, it drops down and gives them more space? I think we could build that in, like, it creates a new question, but if you don't click other, that question never populates for you.
Sure.
Okay.
Lack of regulation. I certainly don't think there's easy access to shopping. I don't think you could eliminate that.
Yes, there is.
There is?
Hop on the highway and you're, go anywhere.
Yeah, exactly.
Depends on where you live, if you, if you live over there behind Myers, shopping's easy to get to.
I live on Clay, shopping's easy for me, I'll have, I just go straight down Chandler.
You know, I just don't think of that question as just simple here too, I could, I'm also thinking like Flint or, you know, Grand Rapids, you know, I can go either way.
Yeah, I think that's a fine question.
Well, yeah.
I think...
The thing is, for me, getting to shopping's easy, but it's not shopping in Bath.
No.
No, that's a good point, right? I go straight down Chandler Road, like, Jason just...
Well, I think that's a separate question, if we want to add that, that's something to add.
I think kind of G and J sort of go together.
All right, G and J.
Easy access to work and businesses and the other places that you go.
So, like, G could just be easy access to work slash shopping?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Okay, and then remove the other one.
So we're keeping country atmosphere?
For some people, I feel like that might be a thing.
Oh, no, no, a hundred percent, I think it is, I think, you know, the others, you know, perhaps small town feeling or something like that.
Yeah, if you want. You, that's a good point, is you like that better than country atmosphere, small town feeling?
Well, I think it's, I think they're two separate things, right?
Oh, really, okay.
I was thinking they might be...
Well, let's not expand the list. Internalize it to the question, why do you live in Bath right now? For me, we live in Bath because we were looking for a place to have a ranch home. And all these sites became available on the golf course, well, that's a great place, we didn't, I really thought about was, is it Bath, was, where, where? We were looking for a type of house, we didn't want a two-story house. We wanted a two-story house, we wanted a ranch style house.
You didn't want a bike level or something like that, you wanted a ranch.
Well, then you can just hit other and take that in.
Upstairs.
Well, there's other questions that address that issue.
Yeah.
Oh, there is, yeah.
Okay. All right, so it sounds like we're good there, though. We've tried a lot, we've shored that up, I think that's good.
To review, you, you've slashed B, C, D, J, K?
Yep, that's what I got.
And Dropbox for other.
Yeah, Dropbox for other, we did our question, we can add more.
Did you add taxes or no? Or you could just put that in other?
I did, I added taxes, added low taxes.
Or not, or just the word taxes.
Taxes or low taxes?
I think that's a perception, I don't know that...
I know, but don't...
Down that road.
Ain't nobody gonna choose higher taxes.
Could we...
Some people do.
Could we change...
So, cost of living, I think, would make the most sense, right?
Yeah, that's addressed in another area.
Yeah, but that has taxes in it.
Could we change D to just like family? Friends nearby?
I'm a county.
Right.
Uh, is there one called that?
I think that's a better reason for people choosing a location than where they were born, yeah.
Family in the area?
Yeah.
I thought we were taking D off there.
Area, we're adding it back and a new one.
Okay.
All right, low, Kate, you brought up low taxes, you want the word taxes, you want the word low taxes?
I brought it up.
All right, then Kate seconded it, sorry.
I think, let's reinforce Bath's low property taxes mentally, any chance that we...
I will say, I will say, that was a reason for me, because we looked at houses in Grand ledge and DeWitt, and we all, and here, and we were like, oh shit, it's gonna be much cheaper to live here. And we all, and here, and we were like, oh shit, it's gonna be much cheaper to live here.
I mean, that's supported by, supported by data, that it is lower than surrounding communities. Maybe that's it, taxes are lower than surrounding communities.
Yeah, so for me, like, I was taking the survey and low taxes was option, that'd be the option I'd pick.
As opposed to taxes?
Yeah, I think, ta- I guess I would pick taxes too, that's fine.
So the balance here is, and not just this question, I think low taxes is fine, but like, we don't want, some of this to me comes across, it's leading, right? That we're, we're fishing for positive.
So you don't wanna put that in other, leave them with things in other?
No, other's not lean at all, cuz you can put whatever in there. But I agree, so taxes, everyone, are we cool with taxes?
What about under, um, adding that reasonable housing costs slash taxes? They kinda go together.
But shouldn't that be in the section under housing?
No, there was, there was more about housing, but this is like the first intro broad question. Why are you here?
Yeah, keep it the way we have it, I think.
Affordable living?
Yeah, I mean, you could change reasonable housing costs to, um, affordable.
That's all I can afford.
When somebody moves somewhere, what do they look at? Housing costs and then the taxes on that house, right?
Yeah, alright, so I'm changing reasonable housing costs to affordable.
Affordable living, I'd say.
Cuz that's a factor too, cuz like.
It's the overall cost.
Yeah, it's overall. I still think you keep taxes on there, cuz I feel like that's a good one to figure out.
So is it gonna be reasonable housing costs slash something?
I'm just taking out reasonable housing costs and put, uh, affordable living. That's all I got.
Okay. So, will the affordable living, say that comes out as like the number one, uh, option, right? How's that gonna inform our comprehensive plan?
Well, that's the problem, then you wanna dial down what they mean by affordable living, that's always the problem.
Affordable living is different depending on who you are and, and what your lifestyle is because.
And your disposable income.
Yeah.
So affordable living, but like taxes, say, say, everyone is like, I love the low taxes. Do we then take, if that comes out as the number one thing, do we then say, we need to, uh, as part of our comprehensive plan? You know, put in, you know, information about, you know, limited conservative services and growth?
Yeah, it, it might be a strategy that you wanna think about for incentivizing economic development, is like figuring out ways to maintain a low tax burden.
It depends on the, the services provided by the township too, because you take East Lansing's taxes, they're higher, but they get a lot more services than we do.
That's right.
Yep. The taxes pay for it. And you go to Canada, their taxes are higher, they get a lot more services than we do.
That's correct.
So.
But it's colder.
This is where we from.
So reasonable housing costs, that is more specific than affordable living. So do we like reasonable housing costs more than affordable living?
I do.
Okay, we got one.
I prefer reasonable.
Reasonable.
Then you gotta add taxes back in.
Alright, I'm taking affordable living out and putting okay next to reasonable housing costs.
Alright, well, let's, we better move along here. We're not gonna, we're gonna be here till midnight.
Okay, alright, number two, the overall quality of life in bad township is, and this is just a classic one to five, excellent to four. I think it's good, like inherently that's good. I wanna know, like. You wanna know how happy people are to be in the township. If everyone says poor, we got some action to do. Okay. In a few words, please explain why you provided this rating, so that's just a broad, one, falling through, do we like that? That's open ended.
I think it does need to be really close to the, cuz when I read this, I'm like, but why, we need to add that in there, and then I turn the page and seeing it there.
Just refer and explain why you provided this rating in question two.
Well, okay, we're cool with the open ending question. Okay.
Wait, what? We're pulling the open end?
No, we're cool with it?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Question four is redundant, is not needed if we have question three and four.
I agree.
Two and three.
Three is also. Hand in hand with one, cuz those are the reasons.
What was that?
Their number one reason to recommend is gonna be.
They're gonna give them a re, a high rating for these reasons, whatever they select, you know, and.
Yeah, maybe it's open and then maybe you'll get more from it.
I guess if you, if they say it's poor, then maybe you don't have. But then, what are they gonna put on the top three?
I thought this three related to question two.
It does.
It does.
Well, it does.
It does, I'm pretty sure.
You're saying it's redundant.
These reasons may also reflect on here.
But I think you gave a counter argument to it, which is if it's poor, then you'll get more.
You're still gonna get your bottom three, that you know that that's what they would not.
But I agree inherently that number four is repetitive, so we're all good on action four.
Yeah, I think I.
I think that's helpful, cuz we're getting rid of stuff.
Are we going off your copy that you gave it to us or?
Uh, no, you don't have to do that. I can go through it here.
Whichever.
Whichever one you got in front of you. Sorry, I was going off my copy cuz I'm taking a lot of notes.
No, I was just trying to go through the same ones everyone else is.
No, don't look at my copy. My copies, you guys are driving this. Alright, that was just little things that we said. I'll bring it, I have my copy, I'll bring it up, like, hey, we taught this, I don't know what you guys think. Alright, uh, number five, what characteristics or aspects of bad township can be improved? Be as specific as possible, try to limit each entry to no more than three to five words.
I think five should be moved towards the end. And the reason I think that is, you're gonna have a group of people who are gonna, going to wanna gripe about the township. And once they get to this question, they're gonna unload and then they're gonna bail from the survey, yeah.
I've said my piece.
And so, but the other reason is that unlike question number one, where you have a million, like, uh, uh, prompts to stimulate some ideas. We have none for this, and so I would recommend either adding some things like taxes are too high. Affordable, how, there's no housing to, to, you know. Um, or, uh, let's, the remainder of the survey stimulate the ideas for them to think about what can be improved.
Well, my, my initial response to that was gonna be increased code enforcement.
Yeah. I think that might be a responsible, yeah, but that was a response that came out of our public session. That's good though, so I'm all about, I think that makes complete sense, that's logical, move it to the end, let the juices flow as they're doing the survey. And then we can talk to them about, I think if you just let the jo- juices flow, I don't think you need an A, B, C to prompt your prompt.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Now, I wouldn't end on that particular question, cuz you end on negativity. You might wanna put back in, and I'm not saying question number four, or no. Uh, yeah, would you recommend Bath to your friends? Some, some sort of, like.
And you on a positive note?
Yes.
Okay.
I don't know what that is, yeah.
Okay, we'll get there, alright. So we're on the hunt for our last positive question.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Move to the end, but not last.
Alright, let's.
Alright, okay. Alright, number six, rank the following items from most important to least important as they relate to quality of life in bad township. And there is a lot here.
I think there's too many choices.
Well, you could, you could leave the choices in there, but have them just ranked their top four or something like that.
Well, that's a good idea.
Once you, once you get down below a certain number.
Top four or five.
Doesn't matter.
Right, yeah, that's true.
What does proximity mean?
Proximity, yeah.
Close. I know what it means, but like, I'm gonna put word.
Yeah.
So you'd say top five or top four?
I think all the proximity items can be reduced to a single proximity question of how close it is to places I wanna go or something like that.
Okay, all can be one.
Agreed.
Now, I, I think A is, would be within the proximity thing. It's not specific, so easy access to the highway, major roads, I would think. Is, means that it's easy to get to places, which may not be close to places as in proximity, but.
And I'd say B is part of that.
B, access to lakes and water, yes.
Proximity too.
Well, I would put B and I together, just recreational.
Yeah.
Access, access to recreational activities or areas.
That's good.
Why not add governmental services?
Yeah, and not social services.
Not social services?
Government services.
How about government and social services?
Where are we at? Like the Walmart's.
K, K. Usually government is social services.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What do you, I, I think social services mean something though. Government services mean something else. Government, when I think of government services, I'm thinking of like.
License, driver's license and. Yeah, and more, and I'm skewed, I guess, cuz I'm more on the municipal side, but I'm thinking of, I'm thinking of like, I can go talk about my sewer bill. I can go get a notary for free, I can do mail. You know, those governmental services, where I'm thinking of social services, I'm thinking of what it says, which is like food assistance, housing assistance. Like, I'm down on my luck, I need.
Those thoughts set our realm of control, right?
Yeah, how would that data factor into the comprehensive plan?
Yeah.
Now, township services would.
Yes.
Yeah.
Township services would.
Yes.
There's one that says quality of township services, like that's in, in your rankings and level of importance, right? So like, for me, my quality, my township's weren't, are really important to me, that means something.
Yeah.
Because, to your point, does the county services mean anything to what we're trying to drive towards? Or to federal services? You know, the federal service most would care about is either social security or, uh, post office.
Yeah, post office. I don't think you need to go that far. I think, I, I don't know, the social service one, the only one I can see that driving in terms of the comp plan. Is letting us know that there's a population of people that are engaging in these services and that's something that.
We already have that in knowledge of how many seniors are in the area.
Yeah.
Um, that'll actually be the driving force. I know there are others.
But I already got K combined with C, D, and E, which is proximity to stuff. So I don't even know. I, I say we make those all into one.
I agree.
And this is first draft, and we'll have one more shot at this.
Yeah, okay. And then we, you guys all like the idea of ranking and then a cutoff, so you don't have to do all of them?
Yeah.
What's the cutoff?
Five.
Five.
There's only gonna be five.
Well, there's only, yeah, how many we got? No, we got one. Three, four, five, six, seven. I got seven total, so.
Do we wanna rank them? What if I feel that all of them are important?
One through seven?
Just one, one through four.
One through four?
Well, there, well, there's ranking and then there's rating, right?
Right.
So, if we rank, then.
Then you can do all seven, just put numbers next to it.
If you, well, if you rank, you'll have, do one, one's most important, seven's least important, but if you rate, then I gotta do a one to five scale for seven different things. So it builds out length, if you have to rate each of them, but it will give you a better sense of what's important to people.
Well, like question seven is a rating. Six will be the same thing.
Yeah, well, you wanna do a rating, you just have to rate seven things, it's gonna build up time.
I find it easier to rate them than it would be to rank them.
So, so part of it is, if you have the same, same kind of like rating system, say it's like a five point scale.
They get used to it.
They get used to it and they can do it a little bit more quickly.
Alright, so I'm gonna say rate all one to five scale.
Yeah.
One, two, I like the one to five scale too. I think when you go one to ten, it's way too much quicker.
Way too many decisions.
Okay, um, seven, rate the following on how much of the, of a challenge each poses. Um, to bad township, sorry, I'm trying to read through my red lines, so it's not going great. Uh, not of importance, somewhat important, uh, majorly important.
I agree with the redlining of getting challenge out of the vocabulary. I, when I read through that beforehand, I thought, eh, I don't really, I don't really like that question.
Yeah, our red line, we went to rate the following on how important you believe each other is to bad township.
Yeah, I think somehow you need to make it clear that N, S, and M are all you need.
What's it again?
All you need are M, N, S, and M in front of the.
Oh, yeah.
You don't need any words or anything else.
Well, you just put a number up.
Could it just be high importance?
Or one, two, and three, or A, B, and C, or.
Very important?
Yeah, I'm not sure, do they show us on the survey logic?
Majorly important.
So this is how, so John, this is, I, I think this is fine on the survey itself, it's just like, you're just.
Yeah, but you're doing an online survey. I'm talking about the person that wants to do a hard copy, Miles.
Yeah, but when we get the, this is just.
Do the for, same format then?
Same for, it'll be this, it'll be a printout of this.
That's fine, no, no issue then.
Can we change it to very important?
Yeah.
Instead of majorly.
Yeah, very, yeah. Yep.
Okay, let's move on to housing, unless somebody's got anything.
Uh, what'd you guys think about on C? Uh, it was originally bike pass and then we put lack of bike pass.
Well, if you would say, what?
If you're saying it's important, you then, you'd want more of it, right?
We went through and created not, non-motorized plan, and now we're changing it back to bike.
It's only, it's only one, it's only one thing within.
But there's other questions further on about.
I know, but we could talk about that.
B and C says the lack of should be, should be availability of, except that, what's important? Lack of sidewalks is not important. Availability of sidewalks is important.
Okay, so you like it in affirmative, not in the negative?
Good point.
I agree.
Take out, alright, so availability of sidewalks, availability of bike paths.
Yeah.
Okay, that's fine.
I don't think you even need availability of, to say sidewalks and bike paths.
That'd be important, yeah.
That's even simpler, okay.
That's even simpler, yeah.
Um, development pressure in rural areas.
What does that mean?
E.
E.
Yeah.
What does that mean? I know what it means, but let's put it into words so that everyone knows what it means.
We're not more of it?
Well, and the only people that can really answer that question are the people who live in the rural area, where I live.
No, necessarily. There are a lot of people who have some strong feelings about rural development, even if they don't live in the rural areas.
Pretty popular country songs, and that's what the song's about.
There you go.
Was that one like, this dirt is expensive or whatever, yeah.
Could we just say development in rural areas?
Preservation of the rural characteristic of the community.
That is.
That's, that's well written in the current conference.
You have communities that actually have village to buy farmland.
But that's more like what Jason just said, like that is more to raise point earlier of like, that's in the affirmative. So instead of like making it a negative thing, which is like development pressure, you say, well, preservation of.
There you go.
Yes.
Preservation of rural areas. That's cool with you?
Well, if you do that, can't you eliminate one of them then?
Take out open space preservation.
Yeah, take out open space preservation.
Yeah.
Okay, did, are we removing A? Uh, we didn't talk about A. Ability to safe and effectively move throughout the township and to other communities. Is that important to you?
I, I, I'm trying to think how my neighbors would take the survey, if they took surveys, and they'd be like, what the fuck does that mean?
Yeah, well, it seems to me as though that's a rehash of A up in six. Yep.
Yeah.
It is.
It is. I'd say take it out.
I'd say take it out.
Alright, it's too long.
And again, you had the edit in yours, which I thought was good, because main street to village.
Yeah, I didn't wanna make it all about mainstream.
Well, again.
I think I take.
Be consistent.
Well, I just.
On what you're calling something, you know, is.
Well, improve Bass village area. It's not all about mainstream, like village area is a big area.
What's the village area?
Let me tell you something right now. We get at least two calls a month of people driving up and down Webster Road. That say, we can't find your facility, and one of them just recently was a new driver for auto value.
Oh, you're, the car fist, the car.
He thinks, the people think that Webster Road is main street.
Yeah.
We get at least two of them a week. So somehow you gotta identify that main street is not Webster Road. It's the road one block east of Webster or something, the road that goes between Slayton and Clark.
There are a lot of planning tools that could help us do that, and I hope as a community, we can work towards that.
Yeah. That's an issue.
It comes with signage.
Believe it or not.
Signage would be one, street trees are another, lighting's another, because when you're on a main street, anywhere USA. There's a bunch of stuff that no one ever thinks about, but it makes them know that they're on a main street, which we don't have any of that.
No.
We have some of it, we have on-street parking on Main Street, lets you know you're on a main street, we have sidewalks on both sides now.
Yeah.
Lets you know you're on a main street, but we're not doing a good job on lighting, burying our lines, any of that stuff.
You say we're on a main street, I don't look at Main Street as being a main street, that doesn't carry through traffic, it doesn't.
Well, a ma- a main street, just from like the planning perspective, through traffic is actually not usually a. Uh identifier of a main street, actually through traffic is now becoming a bad thing to have on your main street.
Yeah, but there's gotta be some reason why a street is called a main street. Main street by name up here. What attracts people to that place? I I just, I just came to me, but most of that street is residential. Yeah, probably seventy-five percent of the street is residential.
Yeah.
And mo- and most of the residential are pretty nice, until you get tipped down over the hill, and then you start getting not so nice.
But the township has made decisions over the last sixty years to have taken us to this, we're gonna wait way off topic. But that have taken us to this place, and if we wanna undo the damage that's done, it's gonna be a long road, but I think it can be done.
I think we need to do that, we're looking, we're looking twenty, thirty years in the future, what do we want that street to look like in thirty years? Definitely not like it looks now.
Yeah.
And should it be single-family homes, what should it be? And we've still got an industry down there that backs up to that street.
It could still, it could still have stuff down there, they just.
It'd be some mixed use, yeah.
You're assuming that we want something.
G.
Okay.
When we're talking about. Negative or positive.
Yeah.
Connotation, could we just, instead of saying lack of ability to attract visitors, could we just say? Like amenities to attract visitors?
Yeah. Yeah.
That's good.
Someone's gotta get us back on the trail.
Okay.
You could also say, you could say improving baths, original downtown area, maybe.
Stay with the downtown, now my, one of my goals before I get to finding is get rid of those two damn downtown signs. I talked about this five years ago, you know, and they're still there, there is no downtown bath.
No, there isn't.
So get rid of signs.
Well, there used to be, so that.
But there's still, there's still, there's there's places down there that could develop. And yes, there might not be parking down there, or there could be parking down there, it's just having people invest to do it. And it could still be part of our community.
Historic downtown area.
Village area is probably the one I hear used most by people in Bath, so I think that's why I wanna stick with that.
What makes that a village area, I guess?
Just all them little streets in there, probably.
Yeah, side arterial streets, and the four corners I would consider on the village area, also there is a census designated place for the village of Bath. It's on the census map.
It's where we have our town races.
Yeah, that's true.
So, I don't know, I like it, I I thought Main Street was bad because it was too specific, village area broadens it out.
Yeah, I do.
And it might mean different things to different people, but I think we all get a general sense of where we're talking about.
I think so, let's move, let's move on to housing.
Alright, housing, alright, so I'm not gonna read through that whole thing, we already said too long makes simple, um how long do you expect to continue living in Bath Township? I think this is inherently interesting question, I'll, I have.
We'll get to the housing part, I like that that first paragraph.
Where they're gonna rework it, I don't even think it's.
And I, instead of putting percentages in, how many residents live in Bath now, we say we've increased by this much, and we say that. It was talking about households and population, household is different from population.
I would say get rid of all the percentages way too.
Yeah, I agree, get rid of the percentages, but.
We don't need any introduction here.
Yeah.
No.
Yeah, I'm something too, just say you're in a different part of the survey, this one's uncover more of the housing topics.
One question, I agree, take this out, but when it says here that most residents are homeowners, I find that very hard to believe. That ninety-two percent of the people in.
Yeah, I do too, right?
Pat Bath own their own homes?
Yeah, I guess I don't know where they're getting that figure, but yeah, that seems high.
It says the relatively few renters, well, did they forget about Chandler Road?
Well, one thing that you have to remember, these are registered residents of that township. A bunch of those students, I would say, high, what sixty to eighty percent of them are registered from wherever they came from. In the country, like when I went to.
Still vote here.
Yeah, but well, not always, like so, when I went to school in Ann Arbor, I, my home of residence was two ten Valley Street, Fenn, Michigan. And then when I went to school at Wayne State, my address was two ten Valley Street, Fenn, Michigan, and I just absentee voted. And a lot of students do that.
But they're living here now, but do we want to attract them to stay here?
Well.
For their, to stay in our area for the rest of their life.
I'm saying that's why you're seeing that disparity, because when on the Census Bureau residents in Bath Township, a bunch of them aren't even included in that figure.
So basically, we're empty houses down here as far as.
As far as the Census Bureau is concerned, those apartment units are not, that's not a population we're tracking.
So let's just get rid of all of this.
Yeah, we are, okay, so.
Well, it's not redlined, so.
Okay, anyways.
So before we get to one, I have a suggestion, before we ask, how long do you expect to live here, I think we should move the two questions from the demographics. I to to this point here, how long have you lived in Bath Township? And then, I think there's, I, how many people are in your household, and then ask, how long do you expect to continue to live in Bath? That's a little bit.
Okay.
Yeah. Moving those around is a good idea.
You don't wanna put those right in the beginning, start them off easy, like I could even say you can move this one to the beginning as well. How long do you expect to live in the township, usually the demo questions are at the beginning.
Do we want to ask what kind of living, what kind of place they live?
Yes.
I didn't remember seeing that in the demographics.
Real quick, before we get there though, so we're cool with moving this and the other demographic questions, because this is a demo question.
No, no, it is, it is.
I think we should do more of that.
The demos to the back?
No.
You keep them in.
In the housing.
It's nice to have quick, easy questions sprinkled throughout the survey.
Okay, so we'll move all the demo to the middle.
Well, the the two housing demos to.
Okay.
Yeah, I think some at the beginning is good, and then some in the middle is fine.
Move to housing for demo question three.
I think it's three and four. And I would, I would swap the order, how long have you lived in Bath Township, how many people is in your household, and then how long do you plan on continuing to live in Bath?
Okay.
And then, what kind of house, what just best describes your housing?
What best describes your current housing situation?
Yeah.
Or your current housing status?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Not status.
Meaning.
Well, do we wanna find out what kind of deva- deva- dwelling they live in, or do we want to?
Single-family home, multifamily.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Almost, I would even put what best describes your neighborhood, it might be more what we're getting at. Is that the more useful data?
What kind of data do we need for?
Well, I get what Kate's getting at, is like you need to understand, like who's taking the survey, are they a renter, are they a owner?
So we'll we'll get community based on the the map, right?
Maybe, depending on where it is.
Yeah. I mean, I do think renting versus owning is a is a good question.
Yeah. What will that information that you're asking for get?
I don't know.
Are you wanting to know if they're in a ranch or duplex or?
That that I think is less important, but I think like for zoning stuff. That we do kinda wanna know what kind of situation they are currently in.
Well, I think to raise point though, it would be interesting to know whether people are looking for ranch homes, by levels, tri-levels.
I think that's in your.
Two-story.
That does give you a lot, that's a lot of options though.
I know, it gives you a lot of options, but it's something that I would think developers would be interested in knowing. Because they're gonna build to a certain market in general.
Question, question five under housing covers that. Which housing types do you think will meet your future housing needs? Single-family, multi-level, ranch.
Okay, so we cover that, alright, so going back to how we worded this question.
It would just be similar to where are you currently, and then that would kinda give us the idea if. If they're in a single-family ranch house and they wanna stay in a single-family ranch house.
We'll get to that, like do, so there's two questions that we were talking about, one of them was. Do you, what is your current um standing status? And it could be own slash rent, that's like one way we could do it, or we could just ignore the own slash rent and just say. Single-family, multifamily, apartment complex, condo.
Basically what you.
And then make inferences, if they are, it's picked apartment, they're renting, if they pick single-family, it's more than likely they're probably owning.
Yeah, I like that matter.
Okay, and you didn't like the word status, what should we, what is your current living situation?
Yeah.
Okay.
Or what best describes your current housing?
Best describes your current housing.
Be interesting, kind of answers you get from around Park Lake. There there are more cars parked along the street than there than there are.
Lake area is always, there's always a cluttering of cars.
Somebody owns this house, but who lives there?
Yeah.
The owner, the owner might live there, but I'm renting out my back three rooms to somebody else.
Yeah, but that's all.
We don't, we don't know that though.
Okay, um alright, so just to for time's sake, based on the responses to your previous question, why do you plan to leave or stay in Bath Township? I don't know.
That's a. Tricky question.
Yeah, then is, is that really pertinent to the master plan?
I say take it out.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, so what are we gonna get from that?
Yeah.
At the very end, we should have, maybe after the one question is like, is there anything that we have not asked about?
That's a classic, opening a question, like whatever it is.
And so that might be something, like if they've got a burning need to say, I'm I'm leaving because of, there's a lack of code enforcement, so they can put it there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, number three, we heavily edited, um because we felt like they were leading. And we feel like they might be trying to do that just in their defense, because there's this grant we're using, and it's all housing focused, so they were, were really trying to make sure they're covering that. But they said, lack of housing affordability is a national, state and local issue, especially for newly independent people, young couples and families and seniors on fixed incomes. I just took all of that out on our red line, I was like, I don't need, you don't need to preface this, like we all. But then, so taking all that out, what remains is, do you believe Bath Township should proactively encourage? Uh how low to middle-class housing, we just, we took low to middle-class out, because like even the low one can be. There's a big difference in people's perception, when I say, are you for uh low-income housing? It's like for a lot of people, that's a trigger word, right?
Yeah.
So we put just the word attainable housing.
I I love all the edits, but I feel like the question's just a dumb question.
Okay.
And the reason is that who's gonna say no?
Yeah.
Yeah, but I do.
There are people who are anti-development of any type.
That is true, and but one, one thing. I do feel.
That question more directly then, right?
Well, I I do feel like we need to have some, I don't know if it has to be this, we gotta have something that says, are you for the creation of. Affordable, attainable, whatever housing for, because of the grant, yeah, remember the fifty thousand dollars that we got is all supposed to be towards like creating a housing.
I'm not arguing that, what I'm arguing is that the methodology of asking this specific question is shitty, and you're gonna get. Five percent of people who are gonna have the huspah to say no, and all the rest would be like, well, why would I like?
I don't like attainable housing.
I I'd not think that we should encourage attainable housing.
I agree, but then we check the box for the grant.
Well, no.
Yeah, but.
I agree.
But if I was a project officer for the granting of the organization, I'd be like, well, this is, they did shoddy work on this particular one question.
Tried.
I also think that.
Better.
A lot of people in Bath Township don't realize how difficult it has to, has become to attain housing in Bath Township. I think the people who've lived here for ten or fifteen years, and are planning to live here for ten or fifteen more years, they're not paying attention to that, they don't realize the need. Yeah.
There's a lot of, there, whatever, I could get on.
You could ask a question along the lines of Bath Township, I encourages attain, uh attainable or affordable housing. I throughout the community for all members, I, what strategies would be acceptable to you? To achieve that goal?
Okay.
I mean, you get into a much different question.
Yeah.
What are the choices?
Yeah.
I mean, that's the thing, and so.
We could build those out, but those.
Well, you know, deregulating, you know, removing obstacles uh for developers to, you know, to build affordable housing. That's, that's an easy one, right?
Do we have?
And that.
No.
I don't think we have those.
Yeah, but that is a policy choice that we're currently, we are currently making, like if you hear any of our builders.
Yeah.
Though, like even Dan Kramer, I talked to him after he went to Meridian, he's like, bro, you will never believe. What Meridian is making me do, I gotta do a well study, I gotta do a water table study, I mean, they had him doing like seven different studies before he could get his building permit.
Yeah.
That's something we wanna do here, by choice.
That's my point.
Yeah, but it's good to know that people desire that.
Okay.
But they desire it, they don't desire it, right?
I'd like to see more housing like the fellow that bought Walnut Hills myself.
Have you seen that house in Walnut Hills?
No.
Thirty thousand square foot mansion?
Something like that. Okay. I like that, that was good.
Right down Lake Leslie Road.
You you want variability within the data, right?
Like five different, six different options.
That's just, that's one strategy to get at a better question, I'm not saying that that's the question that we shouldn't go with.
He requires minimal services and he pays beaucoup property taxes, what better could you ask for?
We're still talking about.
Alright, I'm just putting.
Let's do this, at this point, to his point and yours, we need to ask a housing question. Put it back on our folks that are, were paying for those questions.
I'm just gonna tell them, review Jason's statement at seven oh two.
You could also say something along the lines of what type of housing is most. Important or most needed in the township.
I think we got a housing, we get, we get to that in five.
The question, everybody talks about affordable housing, what is affordable housing?
That's why.
It depends on who you are.
Good question.
Now, the stuff that Castle is gonna develop now to soccer fields, is that affordable housing or not?
No.
It's not, I agree, it's not.
No.
So what is affordable housing?
Affordable housing is a word that, like in the plane industry, the current docking on that is, it's doctrine on that is, it's a word. Just like low-income housing that we would avoid using these days, because affordable housing to most laypeople means low-income housing. And that's why, if you're talking about middle-class housing, they say, use the word attainable housing. But this is, we're getting way into the semantics and weeds.
Yeah, well, no, but this is important, right, because it it's not a bunch of urban original development planners that are taking the survey.
Yes.
It's senior center services, like staff and attendees and my neighbors and.
Yep.
So what are we, what are we doing to this?
They're gonna review Jason's question, or or you know, his question, his statement at seven oh two on the video, and then I think.
Could you give us a synopsis of that at all?
So the synopsis is that the question as is, isn't gonna uh provide valuable data, because few people are gonna say, no. I don't support affordable housing. But even if they said no, we wouldn't know why, right? Is it because they don't want, uh they wanna preserve the rural character of the community and not have any additional housing, or do they just not like? People who can only afford duplexes.
So the question would then be what?
So I threw out an option of I, I asking a question that would be along the lines of. Bath Township is looking to uh support the development of attainable housing. Which of the following strategies I are you comfortable with? So tax abatements, deregulation, you know, there's a number of different things.
Yeah, we'll come up, we can come up with five or six easy.
Well, they got a list here already of some of the stuff.
Yeah, they do.
Alright, well, let's, let's go to the next one, because I think we got it, um if you said yes above, which of the following uh means. Should be used to encourage, and we, our edit was again, get rid of that load of mail and just put attainable housing options. Please rank the following options from most desirable to least. So I guess this kinda does get at, like where it's diving deeper into that point. But.
Well, alright, so just take out three, just adjust four to say. I, which of the following strategies uh should Bath Township use to encourage? The development of attainable housing uh within the community?
Okay, I like that, maybe remove three and reword four. Okay, that's cool.
Could you, could you put other in that too, would you want to?
Put other in there, you like other.
Would it be useful to have a drop-down box with other in there, I don't know.
Yeah, others is useful, others is always, always good. People that are just trying to get through the survey won't use it, people that are hard-pressed and got some burning idea will use it.
So, do you wanna change one word in that, where it says affordable?
Yeah, well, requiring large, no, I think actually that, that is useful there, even though it's triggering, there might be people out there that are like, yeah, subsidized housing, we need it.
Well, he, he says that.
What's he say? So I guess, so when I, this is, again, I don't think the layperson is going to understand the difference, but so E, what that means to me is, um, like Hidden Valley over here, like straight up section eight housing. Where, uh, B means that they're using a Lytec product, and thirty percent of all units will be at eighty percent AMI. Like, they're two different things.
Well, that's true.
Yeah, the general public is.
Yeah, they have no idea on that.
Yeah, they don't have.
The housing is just off, off Webster Road south of sixty nine. What kinda housing is that?
Just off Webster.
Hawks Ridge?
Yeah, Hawks Ridge, so that would be that, uh, Lytec product that I talk, talked about, I mean, they used a pilot with the township back in the day controversially. But they did, in their financial stack when they first developed, they had to have so many units of their housings, I don't know if it's like thirty or forty percent, so somewhere in there, um, have to be at fifty percent AMI for thirteen years. And then the developer, at which point, has options to re-enter the program, but they've expressed that they're gonna go to a whole market rate. Um, okay, so, I'll, I think we can rework B to make it so the layperson can understand it. And just be like, a percentage of units are low income or affordable. So I'm gonna put rework.
Okay.
Okay, we're moving on. Which housing type do you think will meet your future housing needs in, uh, five to ten years? And this is the one where I like this question, cause it kinda gets at like, the comprehensive plan isn't a thing that, like what's going on today, we know what's going on today, where we wanna be.
Right.
How I like this, um, so single family, multi-level, and then to your point Ray, single family ranch, which is different, obviously. Townhomes, apartments, and do you guys think the general person, townhomes mean something?
Yes.
Apartments, assisted living, and then, I think you could almost build this one out, like give even a couple more options.
Put a duplex in there.
Condo, attached condo.
Well, yeah, if you use condo, you gotta be specific.
Do we have, I guess we do have a few attached condos.
We have attached condos, and we have single other. You just leave it?
Townhouse and condos are kinda the same.
They're similar, and the building code, they're different, they're treated differently. Townhouses, you can reduce a firewall.
Yep.
Condos, you still have to have a firewall, which is weird, but that's a building code.
That was a townhouse.
That's nice.
Townhouse.
Individually owned?
It can be either.
That's the difference in my mind, is townhouse is rented and a condo is owned.
Right.
That's, in my mind, I don't know if that's correct, but that's in my mind.
Northern Virginia, they were townhomes.
And people owned them. Yeah. Yeah.
Depends on the community.
Yeah. Okay, so, but are there any other that we should add here, any thoughts? Are you thinking these are good options? Duplex, farm. Yeah.
Mini farms.
pasture.
Trailer parks. Yeah, we don't, we don't have mobile home park as an option, but obviously people live in them.
I think we should add that.
Yeah.
That came up during the, the one meeting.
Well, what's that development over on State Road on the south side, it's the west of the storage thing, State Road Storage. Those were all modulars on foundations, isn't that right?
Cadweth Farms?
I think so.
It's into it township, but yeah.
Yeah.
It started, it started out being mobile homes, then somebody bought the whole thing, and they tried to move all the mobile homes out, it's still something, it's still there. The rest of those are all either, well, when you first, the row house type things, those are all, all leases apartments.
Okay.
Further west, those are all single family homes.
Were they stick built though, or I thought they were?
Oh, no, they're all stick built.
Oh, really? I think you're thinking about farther west, right, west of the highway? West of one twenty seven, or are you going east?
I'm going east.
For the purposes of, like. For the purposes of the state of Michigan Building Code, like modular manufacturing hasn't made anything.
Yeah.
Alright, um, okay, I think we got.
The falcon.
Do you wanna go to development?
Yeah.
I knew it was a bird, some sort.
Thank you.
What do we think about the introduction for development, any thoughts on an introduction there? This one was shorter, less numbers.
Still words.
It's okay, kinda word even.
Try to shorten up, maybe?
Yeah, I would.
Try.
But the second sentence, I mean, that's true, but do we need it?
Yeah. I can ask them too, like what's up with these?
Yeah, ask of why they included that.
Okay.
Cause I think the first sentence covers it really.
Okay.
Let's ask why they're, we're paying them to make this survey that we're basically making.
Yeah, good point.
That's always how it goes though, alright, um, should a commercial development take place in the following areas in Bath Township? What'd you guys think of this one?
I delete B. Yeah, I agree.
You would, but I wouldn't. Yeah, I wouldn't either.
Okay, where are you gonna put commercial development down there?
There's vacant lots. There's empty, there's vacant buildings.
There's all these houses that you were bagging on.
There's only two.
Yeah, industrial development, I mean, the steel place, get rid of that. I wouldn't do.
I guess the question is, the people who live on Main Street closer to Clark Road, are they gonna wanna have a big commercial development to north of them, and the only way to get there is through my front yard?
Well, that was only, my only gripe with this was, like even Clark Road, along Clark Road. Yeah, there's some areas on Clark Road where I think commercial development could go, like at the Four Corners.
Four Corners, sure.
But like, Clark Road was a whole friggin township.
Yeah.
Do you wanna just change Clark Road to Four Corners? Clark and Webster intersection?
Yeah, giving cross street options might give us a better pinpoint of where we're talking about.
Yeah, because if you ask anybody that lives south of.
Like you could even say main, main between high and slate, cause that's really what we mean, right? So, I'm gonna put cross streets.
For north Main Street.
And that was all commercial, when the houses were there originally, I mean, that's where the, that's where the grocery store was, that's where the mill was, that's where.
Post office was.
Office, everything was there.
Yep.
The whole town.
The fire barn was there.
The fire barn was there.
Yep. But that's was, now what do we look like in the future? I think it should just be residential. I think it should be residential also, that's my thought.
Maybe a couple of commercial, maybe, maybe the barber shop.
One of the coffee shops, barber shop, something like that maybe, but.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm gonna put cross streets, um, and, well, we'll dial those in a little bit, where I think they're probably.
Okay, so, you gotta break out the two I sixty nine exits and break those out, because those are two completely different areas.
Old, they should. Road versus Saginaw.
And then I, I think we should have something, we should have Chandler Road on this.
Yes.
Yep, agreed, don't deny that.
I should, think you should define what area Chandler Road though.
We'll put, we'll put cross, we'll put cross streets, or between this street, you know, south of, south of state.
South of State Road, yeah.
Yep, Chandler Road, south of state, cause that's what we're talking about.
And I guess the other question I've got is, when you say commercial development, what are we talking about?
Not residential.
No, not residential, what kind of businesses are considered commercial?
I don't think you should, I get where you're going with that, but then we're like, this, remember the layperson, you know?
Well, I, I think this is good, because there's retail, right, retail, commercial.
Retail's commercial.
But we're not talking about putting in industrial.
Nope, industrial is non-commercial.
So maybe we should have that, you know, when we talk about commercial, I mean, there should be a definition piece maybe under the development, or somewhere in here.
Commercial development, just parentheses, not.
Industrial?
Not industrial.
Not farming, not, I mean, I don't, what are the, I mean, to raise a question?
They could give, they could give some examples, commercial, and, and parentheses, retail, shopping, food.
Offices.
Professional, professional offices, yeah.
Yeah.
Stuff like that, yeah.
Doors units?
But I think that, I didn't see anything here that addressed industrial development at all, I think we did.
Yep, agreed, don't deny that, alright, I'm gonna, so we need, within this to raise point, I'll keep it on our radar, if we get to the end, we don't see one thing about industrial, we gotta add an industrial question. Um, Bath Main Street, again.
You're gonna have to put the parentheses and define where it is.
Which of the following is a development, would you like to see more or less of a Main Street, please choose one. I'm, I'd be fine with changing this again to the village area.
Yep.
I don't think you gotta make it all about Main Street.
Maybe put other in there too, or no?
Is everyone fine with changing it to village area?
Yes.
To raise a question, why are we asking the questions specifically Bath Main Streets?
I think it's cause it came, we gotta remember, they put this based upon the feedback that they'd gotten up to this point, and Main Street kept coming up.
Where, where'd they get the feedback?
When they did the two listening sessions with the, um, they did one with staff, and then they did one with um, all the, the adjacent chairs, so John, um, the rec chair, the ZBA chair. And then they did the public session, which Main Street was talked about a lot, and then they got the feedback from you guys about what you wanted to include in the survey.
Yep.
So, Main Street was just coming up a lot, and, and different ways though, so they didn't really know how to tackle it.
This'll give us some insight too.
That's, they're starting to get insight, right, okay, we all know what these people want with Main Street, so let's ask some Main Street questions.
I could tell you what they're gonna say, I mean, I think we already know the answer here, I mean, we get, we have Main Street in that first question, right? Commercial development.
Okay.
Yeah, whether we can take that out or not.
No, you're right, like, no, well, I think what Jason's saying is, in that first question, if you, should commercial development take place in the following answers? If you, and if you clicked Main Street, like, yeah, I want commercial development there, then you kinda answered too.
Right, and then if you click no, if you click no on that, then this, well, which ones would you like to see? That sort of feels like it negated your.
Yeah, it feels like, yeah, they simply ignore what you said.
So maybe we just get rid of that one.
So I think question two should pertain more to Webster Road between Drumhiller and the freeway.
Okay, but where are you gonna say, Jason?
So you introduced skip logic, or display logic, so if they do use Qualtrics, I don't know if Survey Monkey uses it. You could say, for anyone who says yes to any of the, these.
It populates too.
Then it will create separate questions, what type of commercial development or development would you like to see?
In that area.
In that area, and so if they choose Main Street and Webster, but not anything else, then.
Then, yeah, I like that, I like that way better, okay. So I'm taking out Bath Main Street, and I'm gonna say, survey logic based on answer to question one. That's the better question. Okay, alright, cool. Alright, what challenges do you see for agriculture in Bath Township? Cost of farmland, pressure developing farmland.
Farmland never comes up for sale, because it's all backdoor bargaining. That's the biggest challenge.
Yeah.
There's some for sale right across the street.
The cost of farmland would come into play, right?
Yeah, yeah, they think it's worth, like shit, well, which it might be.
Not as farmland, but enough to develop on there.
Real estate's all about location, um. I don't know, I think it's, you gotta ask one ag question, right?
Sure.
We got a lot of farmland, we're trying to preserve it, what's the threat? And I like the word challenges better than I like the word threat, threats are.
Yeah, I do too, I like challenges better.
Alright, so we're cool with that, um, what types of non-traditional agriculture activities would you support on existing farms? I thought this was like interesting too, from a land use perspective, some of this we've talked about in the past, and recently has come up with the Peacock Road Farms, so agrotourisms, a land use we probably need to introduce in the rural area. So I thought it was just an interesting question, I didn't have any feedback for it.
I feel like B, C, and D are all that agrotourism.
You could collapse them to agrotourism.
Yeah.
I would say no.
No, okay.
Because agrotourism, for the majority of people, would not know the definition of that word.
Okay, but you could say such as, but, I feel like they all sorta.
Yeah, like if we had a land use category of agrotourism, like we're not gonna create a land use category for wine tasting room.
Right.
We just would have agroca- tourism, we'd pigeonhole that in.
We would, but.
But I understand the layperson's like, oh, that's a new word to me, but to Kate's point, you could just give the examples.
Yeah, agrotourism such as corn maze, wine tasting, banquet halls, or venue, event venues.
What do you think of that more?
I could live with it.
Okay, it just collapses three options down to one, sure, where, where it helps us in that goal, shoring and this thing up. Agrotourism with examples.
What are we gonna do with any of this data? The, the question three and four, like, it's a lot of real estate, right? I, question three, I don't know what we can do with it, we can't control the cost of farmlands. You know, pressure development, develop farmland into other uses, yes, we can do some things there, but everything else is like out of our realm of control.
Yeah, qu- question three, I agree with that logic, for sure. Question four, I, I agree with that less, because there are things in your control that you guys could do with that info.
We do.
You can allow these land uses or not via zoning.
So, but what, what really do we want to know about agriculture, as a planning commission, to inform the comprehensive plan?
Well, I, I guess the thing is, hopefully we'll have people in that space taking the survey, and as times are tough right now, I think ag is also one of these land uses, which is like a lot of households are, they're trying to diversify their revenue streams. And we need to create our zoning to either like say, nope, you're farming and that's it, or like, no, we're open to diversifying your revenue streams. And this will help us answer that.
So question number four would do that.
Four's good, three does go to your point of like, yeah, what are we gonna do with that? Climate change impacts, Bath Township.
I don't think you're gonna influence that. I think you're gonna have a big problem if you try and restrict people's farmland too much, cause I see what's going on down around Ann Arbor, and they're, they're going to court if they can't develop the way they want it.
Will that be interesting to know how they feel about it, and there's another in there, so they can specify, but okay, where are you gonna say about three?
I mean, we could just create an open ended question. Create a space, you know, what are your thoughts about agriculture in Bath Township?
Could we preface it with like, if applicable to you?
I mean, I, again, I'm not sure what to do with this question, I mean, I'd like to use the real estate for a better question, I just, I'm not sure what the better question would be.
Okay, cause I agree that like a lot of people are like, I don't fucking know, I'm not farmer dude.
Right.
Well, which, which creates issues in the data, right, and so you got five farmers and two hundred non-farmers who complete the survey.
Yeah.
Anything that's.
So should we add an option of unsure, or no basis to give an answer, IDK?
I think that would be good.
Are you a farmer, or yes, no? And then you get this question, right? Well, alright, maybe that's.
That's not bad.
Because the farmer is going to look to maximize his return.
But I feel like four again, even if I'm not a farmer, I still like four because I would, I want some wineries in my township, man, I'm trying to hang out.
The only problem I've got with lumping B, C, and D together, I see banquet halls as being different than the other two.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, I do too.
Cause the banquet hall could be a pretty big building.
Yeah, tasting room can be pretty big too.
I don't know.
Old barns are turning into those left and right.
Yeah.
It's awfully expensive to turn an old barn into a banquet hall.
Okay.
Believe me.
I, I don't see any problem with dividing them out though.
Yeah.
Okay, alright.
I think we should throw out the trial question of.
What are we doing with three?
Oh, go ahead.
What are we doing? Other than it just gives us information about that.
I think you should throw out a trial question on four, and give them a range, would you be willing to pay an extra fifty dollars a month, a hundred, two hundred dollars in your taxes to preserve farmland?
That's a whole different question.
That's a whole different question, but I think it's, I think it's a loaded question that would be interesting to see.
I don't wanna start that rumor.
Really, how much do people really wanna preserve? Really, how much do people really wanna preserve the farmland, though? Are you willing to put some money on the line?
That could be the drop, dropdown, uh, question. If they answer some of these, the, you know, the cost of farmland.
A lot of communities are.
Sub, sub it in, are you willing to spend X amount to preserve that?
Yeah.
Alright, just, what we wanna do with three? I think we, it's, we need to figure out what do we wanna know about agriculture. I'm confused as to, do we wanna hear from farmers about what their needs are, or do we wanna know what the whole community thinks about agriculture?
I, I think the whole community.
Well, it's gonna be a question that goes to the whole community, so inherently, it's gonna be the latter, and if you don't think the whole community's gonna give you appropriate feedback, I say ax it.
I would think someone like you might give me very good information about.
I think some of these also.
I'm not a.
Trend into political, extremely political topics.
Well, yeah, definitely the one where it says like soar.
Climate change, and, um.
But that's why I feel like we can't do anything with three.
So, I think people.
Can you go back and ask them to look at this?
I don't know. People who don't know might just use their political bias to answer.
Yeah.
How about a question, how much do you support, or how much should Bath Township support agriculture in the community?
Well.
That's pretty vague.
That's pretty vague too.
Could you just leave that question there and just leave it open for it to be filled out?
That's too vague, I say.
I'm just gonna ask them why three, and what are we getting at?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think you should ask them about three and four miles.
I like.
I like four, but I think it's gotta be a little more fine-tuned as to. Because banquet halls, to me, are a lot different than tourist attractions.
But that's why I divided it back out, cuz I agree with that, so I'm, I might, I'll take those into one. Okay, I'm gonna move on to five.
Hold on, on E there.
Yeah.
Commercial scale, solar projects that allow farming to continue, what does that even mean? I don't even know what that means, I guess.
You don't like the preface of allow farming to continue?
No, that allows, so there's a solar project on the farm, and they're still gonna farm, is that?
I think that's what they mean, it could be reworded better, I think that's allow farming to continue.
Could be kinda like this video, wind scale project they've got up by Ithaca, they've got all kinds of stuff there.
Right, right, yeah, for, yeah.
Farming goes all, all around it.
Yeah, that's the problem with soar usually.
But with the solar, generally, they take.
That takes soar.
So you.
I think allow.
I don't know that you can have one.
I don't like the allow farming to continue, cuz to me, that makes it seem like that farm's going out of business if you don't allow soar. I say ax that from the end.
Yeah, I don't like the wordy.
They go to solar because they think they're gonna make a bunch of money, and they don't wanna keep farming.
But some solars are high enough that you can graze underneath them.
The commercial scale with soar and the commercial scale wind get at the subject of the question, which is non-traditional ag activities.
That's not tr- that's non-ag, it's traditional non-ag.
Yeah.
When you have a commercial sales, scale solar or wind.
Well.
I mean, the wind, I guess, I mean, to John's comment, you can farm around it.
But it's non-traditional agriculture activities, but they are becoming increasingly associated with farms, both while they have solar.
They are, that's true.
It is, but it's extractive, right, from agriculture.
Yes, that's what I'm getting at, they're two different things.
I think for the layperson, I think it's a good gauge on where they're at with solar, and it's, you gotta put it, you wanna put it somewhere, that's the place to put it, probably.
Combine the two, I mean. You either are in support of renewable energy or you're not.
Okay, we'll just put renewable energy projects.
Well, I think you could just cancel the allow farming to continue, because.
Um, yeah, I already took that out.
They're making that choice.
Yeah, they're making the choice, but I agree, we could, uh, collapse these into renewable energy.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm moving on, um. Uh, what are, what, what are your biggest concerns about development? Rank the following with one being the most concerning and six being the least concerning, so you got stuff like traffic. Noise, lighting, unplanned, uh, slash disharmious development, uh, enough development somewhere else, um. Intrusion into the rural landscape, I think these are things we hear about a lot, this could be useful, you can, all of these can be addressed via zoning.
We changed unplanned and dishar- disharmonious to like incompatible, or.
Yeah, undesirable development. I'm just gonna put words.
Because we're sitting here going, we're trying to make the, this doesn't, that doesn't happen.
Yeah, disharmness is, or not, that's a very like planning-centric word, the layperson has no idea what that means.
Undesirable is pretty good too.
The other question, really, when you say development, what kind of development are you talking about? Do you have a concern about residential development, commercial development, industrial development, what? The concerns are gonna be different for each one of those.
Yeah, but, you know, in a perfect world, we would get every person to answer those three different questions, what are your concerns about, we're, you know. You gotta, you gotta make some allowances somewhere. So I think it's fine.
Well, maybe just change six to, if you have additional thoughts, you know, maybe prompts, you know, are there specific development types that you're, you're most concerned about?
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Six, if you have additional thoughts, like comments, um, and then maybe in parentheses, are there?
No, additional thoughts on, uh, on, on develop, the, the, I mean, link it to the question above.
Okay. If you have additional thoughts or comments.
Or specific, or specific development types that you have, you have concerns about, we show them here.
Okay, or you have, or. Okay, alright, cool, dirt roads, which we wanna change to gravel.
Yeah, absolutely, every place in there that says dirt.
Got it, agreed.
I was just saying, do we really need B, the dirt roads add to the rural character, I think that seems fairly.
Talk to John.
I don't know, what, you like B, do you guys?
Yeah, I, I think dirt roads are great, or gravel roads, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We'll have one person who agrees with that.
I'll take gravel, I'll take a well-maintained gravel road over a badly maintained asphalt road anyway.
True.
So I, I think you need to know. The respondent, whether the respondent lives on a gravel road or doesn't live on a gravel road.
Well, that's a good point, Jason.
We talked about that when we went through, we're like, yeah, I'm dairy, I fucking love a dirt road, but every time I drive on one, I avoid like the plague.
And so.
Depends whether it's, was it just raining or not?
Yeah, that is all factor when it comes to.
How they've maintained it.
When was it last created?
And actually, Clinton County does a pretty good job maintaining the dirt roads, not just here, but other townships too.
What do we do with this question?
I would just say, George. Right before this goes out, chloride the gravel roads. If you want good ratings on.
I thought you were gonna quiz me, my answer.
Are we cool with B though, we think we need to get rid of it?
I, I don't understand what purpose it serves.
I agree. Yeah. There, yeah, rural, it's inherently true. Rural roads, or gravel roads.
Rural areas tend to have gravel roads.
Yes.
Right, this is like, true or false?
Yeah.
Rural areas tend to have gravel roads.
That's true.
And C pulls in some of that too.
C kinda gets to that character part of it, though, that's, that's more of an opinion question than.
I'm, I'm removing B.
How, how are these questions on dirt roads gonna drive our comprehensive plan?
Well, cuz it's about development of the township in the next twenty years, if everyone's coming back and they're like, this is not important at all.
So, in the next twenty years, we're not gonna pave any of the gravel roads, except for Drumheller. And if you're fishing for community inputs to drive that, then I'm.
I'm not, I didn't talk to them about this at all, but I think that would be the only one, I agree in twenty years if I pave Drumheller.
Yeah.
If you're gonna make it a class A road, yeah, I'd agree.
Cuz y'all road committee folks pulled up some pretty interesting shenanigans during the COVID.
I guess they probably just wanna check the box of, there's some dirt roads, I would feel about it.
Trying to hide behind you, John. I'm trying to hide behind you.
Okay, so are we cool with that, though, I'm, I'm removing D, it's one question about dirt roads, it's not, like, I don't know if it's an end all be all.
Yeah.
That's fine, I don't care.
I would.
You wanna get rid of it?
I think, I would, I would say to the consultants, when you're reviewing this, and if the survey is still too long. This is a whole section that I would be comfortable axing, like, I don't, the, the, the juice ain't worth the squeeze.
Okay, I'm gonna put if, too long. Of.
I support that.
Yeah.
Same thing with bike lanes.
Cuz we have ratings and stuff for that.
Yeah.
Can't go.
Twenty-four point six nine.
Okay, bike lanes, uh, how would you describe yourself as a cyclist, I mean, our edits were like, get rid of those qualifying statements, just get to the question.
Uh, delete the whole section.
A lot of this was covered in the, uh.
Non-motorized.
Non-motorized plan, thank you.
Okay.
Pull that information in, which.
I mean, if you wanna re-ask it, I guess, there's really no harm.
I'm, I'm just putting what I said for the last one, which is if we determine this is too long, these can be cut.
Yeah.
If they, if they think in their professional opinion, they're gonna get good responses from, and, and we get a little bit more information about bike lanes, fine.
I would still push back, but I could push back at the second meeting.
Yeah, you can push back at the second meeting.
That's fine. Because we can't pull this information from elsewhere, correct?
Yeah, yeah, we do have the recent non-motorized plan. Okay.
But I guess, I guess my question still stands on all this information, how is it gonna dr- drive what we do with the, with the comprehensive plan?
Yeah.
In twenty years.
Well, anytime, because whether we build.
Well, so usually.
Bike lanes or not, is that, is that something we address in the comprehensive plan?
Well, you gotta remember what the comprehensive plan does though, too, you know, if, the comprehensive plan is then our, like, me, planning staff, you guys' guiding document. For the next five years, for sure. Um, and every grant and opportunity that comes up will be like, oh, yeah, we're doing a safe streets for all, uh, project on Chandler. Got, we gotta make sure those shoulders are four feet, it's in the comp plan, it's gotta be four feet, I don't care if it means less. Road that we get to do overall, but we need to, this was important to everybody.
Right, it ought to be wider than four feet too, four, four feet's not enough.
They should be off the road, I think.
Well, four feet's the state doctrine, I think, for when you can have a marked bike lane.
Yeah.
That's why I'm saying four feet, um.
Street parking, we would have the entire section.
I would too, I could.
Well, we had, I mean, on ours, we definitely got rid of number one, um, number.
Yeah, you did.
Well, cuz I just, I guess our thing was, we were like, where do you usually park, I don't care about that, where, where do you wanna park, I'm more interested in that.
I, I think some of this information's important too, for one, for grant rating, but also. Miles, I don't know if you wanna share, what we talked about, when businesses come in, you gotta park off-street to get to that business, like, you know, like, if you had a business here. You might go park two streets down.
Oh, yeah.
This information might pertain to that, or no?
Yeah, I mean, I, again, number one, I just don't like, because I know what the current parking situation is, I don't need a survey to tell me, I can go down there and see with my eyes, um. And two, we left in, but we reworked it a little bit to get it down to four options.
It, it will not inform anything. I mean, there's one development that this might pertain to, but it's, it's a question and data in, in search of a business to the comp date.
Well, yeah, well, if there was another business that went down there, they, you'd wanna know some of this information to, to, to grow, wouldn't you?
Yeah, and if we're gonna write any standards on on-street parking, it'd be good to know. What people want, do they want angle parking, they want parallel parking, cuz we'll write it that way then.
Yeah. What person is gonna want, under, like, I don't know what I, what kind of parking I want in downtown Bath, first off, there's nothing there to go to.
I might agree with Jason.
I guess that, it doesn't have to be downtown Bath, right, like, you can ax, you can say, just like, in the township, if there is on-street parking in the area, what kinda on-street parking, like, me personally, I'm all about the angle parking.
But angle parking is not safe.
I like it, though.
Go, go drive, go drive through downtown to wit sometime, and try, and try to access the main street from one of the side streets with that angle parking, you gotta drive halfway across the street to be able to see by the cars.
So.
It's not a safe thing to do.
Especially if somebody's got a crew cab pickup with a full-length box.
That makes it even worse.
Okay.
So, given the value of real estate on this survey, I don't think it reaches the threshold of.
I'm cool with that.
No, I agree with you.
Okay, you don't want anything about parking.
No, I don't think it's satisfied.
I want wider and longer parking spots, that's what I want.
Okay, no, for sure.
Look at the parking spots in Costco, now, those are, those are good parking spots, they're pretty well done.
Said like an engineer.
They even get trees in their parking, they even get trees in their parking lots. That's what we need here.
That's like a planner's worst nightmare, really. You know, this giant Costco parking lot. Alright, um, we need to get you to the planning conference.
I, I, I was thinking about that, like, I wouldn't mind going to that.
Okay. Um, alright, these quite, where are we? Signage and wayfinding, okay, we talked about this, all this came up a lot, so I can see why they would include it.
Yeah.
These questions were, alright, so the first one. How challenging is it for friends and family who are unfamiliar with the area to navigate to and from places in Bath Township, I'd say. If I answered a, I'd say.
Either A or B.
Do we, do we need the intro paragraph?
Oh, yeah, how do we feel about the intro?
I don't think we do, just call it signage, get rid of wayfinding.
Okay, wayfinding's planning.
So, so the challenge with that first question is, you're gonna confound people who actually use signs versus people who use technology to navigate. And so, you're not gonna be able to interpret the data all that well.
Okay.
I agree with you.
I agree too.
Thank you.
Bust it out into two questions.
I think we wanna say, how well-marked are the signs directing people to points of interest in Bath?
I like that a lot better.
Cuz that asks, that asks specifically about signs.
Yes, yeah, yeah, we need signs, I agree, we need signs, don't we have a grant to address that issue?
Uh, no, we got a grant, and we're gonna get one, welcome to Bath Township sign.
That's it?
That's it.
Can someone paint the.
But we're also getting, but the, the, welcome to Bath Township sign on Webster Road is the one we're getting. But we're getting, it, that was just one piece of, we're getting benches, we're getting a metal fence, we're getting, uh, street lights, like, there, it was all suite of stuff.
Nice.
So we didn't get anything?
We didn't get like a, cuz how the grant was ran was for placemaking elements along the Webster Road corridor.
Yeah. We tried to get a question at our last meeting about having us take a look at signs for other communities and see what we wanna have. Which I think is a good idea, but I guess we can't pay for it.
Yeah, it's a money.
We could affor, we could afford probably within our budget, uh, small signage, just like, like they have in some of the communities I'm talking about, that's not a big.
Not the Meridian signs?
Meridian townships, their signs are van, like, you go to the park, it's beautiful, it looks, it's nice for that park. I'm just saying, I don't think we need a big sign like that in our community, except for like the main corridor, probably.
Well, they have, I think, our, we'll get back to this, but one, I think what step one is, this township needs a comprehensive marketing strategy.
Yes, they do, yeah.
Okay, well, alright, so with that being said, I think Kate's point, and all you agree is inherently true, you, dude, you're talking about signage, ask a question about signage. So I got, I just put signage, I asked that question, I put signage question. Okay, um, two, rate your opinion on the following statement on a scale of one to five, with one being completely agree and five being completely disagree. And I think these are interesting, we on our edits added one that said, welcome to Bath, signs are readable and clear, Chandler Road, Webster Road, for those who know.
A, A should be deleted. Signage directing people to Main Street's sufficient? Why do we wanna direct people to Main Street? There's nothing there.
Yeah, I agree with you, Ray.
Till you put something there, then you can get a sign.
So, the challenge is if you have a bunch of. Long-term residents who still, in their hearts, believe in Main Street, and if you don't have something there.
Yeah, it's for everybody.
Then, then you're, you're gonna upset some folks.
Yeah, but you're not gonna take down what's there necessarily, you're just not gonna add to it.
And Ray. I would take the downtown signs down, because there's no downtown, there's nothing there that.
But Ray, you could also.
That hill goes down at quite a steep angle.
But Ray.
Maybe we put a sign at the top of the hill that's entering downtown.
But Ray, to your point too, I mean, this question could also, like, A could reinforce what you're saying, if you get a bunch of people that say, sign directing people to Main Street are significant, you could get like, you'd be like. Sign directing people to Main Street are significant, you could get like, you'd be like.
Not needed.
Yeah, not needed.
And a lot of long-term residents know that too.
They know what Main Street is, not Webster Road.
Would would you wanna rephrase A though, maybe a little bit, Ray, to say, like. More signage is needed for downtown, and then you just completely disagree, and then it proves your point, that it's like, people don't care about that at all.
What about, what if we we pivots sort of Main Street, say signage directing people to Bath's. Like, historical. Assets or something, I mean, I'm like, cuz there's.
I'm fine, I'm fine with saying historical, but instead of sufficient, well, how about we say is needed, that way they can agree or disagree.
Yeah.
And then, if you, instead of sufficient, you put is needed, then Ray can determine through the survey if his argument is how the community feels or not.
I like that better, you call it historical, John?
Historical.
No, I wouldn't call it.
Well, people then are gonna think you're talking about the museum, which we have made an effort to put some more signs up.
Well, would you say signage for parks downtown?
What about?
And the village area.
I'm gonna put village area. Alright, and I'm gonna put.
People do come to see it.
I'd just emphasize James Cousins Park myself.
Okay, and we'll find out what people want, I mean, that's one point, like, not what we necessarily want, what the general public wants.
Yes.
Okay, alright, three, what other suggestions or concerns do you have about signage, this is open-ended?
Well, I'm gonna go back to G, just because I live on the other side of the highway on off Marsh Road. You know, nobody knows you've left that wonderful township of Meridian.
You want us to put Chandler, Chandler dash Mark, Marsh.
Yeah, Marsh, I I agree.
The other thing is, you know, if you're on sixty-nine, you're coming along and it says, next exit.
What Marsh?
East Lansing, Oakliss. The first thing you hit is Bath Township, why aren't we on that side?
That's an M dot thing, we could.
I know, it's an M dot thing.
Alright, but I got Marsh on there, to your point, I think that's important, sorry to leave off Marsh. I think it's like, yeah, no screwing around.
Because everybody in that area thinks you're, yeah.
You think they think you're in Haslis, though.
Yes, yeah.
No, you'd really need is a a a sign like large as a stop sign or so, that's very.
I think if you're gonna do it, do it. I think you're gonna do a welcome to Bath sign, do a welcome to Bath sign. It's like buy ones, cry ones. Yeah, I mean, like, go all in, dude, buy ones, cry ones.
Like Chandler.
I agree.
Kinda related to this, it always bugs me, the storage place out there, East Lansing Storage.
Yeah.
Is when you, anyone when other developer goes in, in Bath Township, do we can tell them you cannot use the name of a.
I mean, I can ask, I can ask legal, I don't, I actually think the answer is definitely no. Because you can control dimensional standards of signage, you cannot control content, it's a freedom of speech issue.
Now, we can make it a contingency for Dimaxian for their next.
I don't know if you can make it, I can ask.
No, I put up a welcome to Bath sign.
Oh, like, make, yeah, if it's within the nexus of their development, yeah, cuz they're right there, yeah, we'd like you to include this sign. I can ask, man. Okay.
Payback.
Alright, so we are moving on now, we're getting there, guys.
Regulation.
Um, yeah, regulation, okay, so we made a bunch of edits, they got a long thing, how do we feel about the long intro? Should we simplify?
Will you just read it, Miles?
Yeah, I mean, man, you're making me work for it, um.
Your edited version.
Oh, the edited version of it? Here, let me catch up to where we're at on this. Okay, so land use regulations refer to the laws and policies that govern how land may be used. These regulations can impact the public in various ways, such as by protecting property values, promoting public health and safety. Preventing uh overdevelopment, um, requiring permits for development and limiting homeowners. This is funky, homeowners use their property for income, local government have the authority to regulate such items. And they exercise this authority to varying degrees. The following questions will help Bath Township understand your attitudes and expertise related to such land use regulation. I think where this is coming out of. Okay, I think where this is coming out of is that sticky question that we talked about, what we wanted to include in the survey. Where like, how do, if we include a question that says, how do you feel about regulation? Everyone's gonna say. I don't like it, but in reality, what what happens, and this is like the phone calls, we get in the office every day. All the rules for my neighbors, don't look at my house. And so, I think they're just trying to profit, it's like where this is coming from, but it's like, that was painful for me to read aloud just now.
So, I think with your edits, keeping the first and second sentences. And axing the rest, so axing the part where local governments have the authority to regulate.
Yeah, whatever.
I don't think we need that, I think that's implied, I do think it's helpful for folks to recognize that. Um, protecting property values, promoting.
Yeah, okay, so I'm pointing, sentence one, two are good.
What if you use the term like zoning and ordinances, is that better than regulation? It sounds more neutral to me.
We like, we use. What about the word standards instead of regulation, zoning standards?
We could just say zoning.
I just don't like regulation.
I like zoning and ordinances.
Alright, so like land use ordinances?
Yeah.
Government interference.
Okay, um, alright, that's helpful, that's all helpful. Alright, please rate your opinions on the following statements on a scale of one to five, with one being completely agree and five being completely disagree. And then we got um A through G here, so we got a couple. Any thoughts on those? We didn't have any edits, so I guess we thought they were okay.
I like the last one.
Do we need the word regulation? I, to me, it's a harsh word, but it, again, we regulate it.
We are regulating them, like, you wanna be upfront, in this context, I think it was cool to soft-launch the idea in the intro. But like, you want them to feel it and F.
I'm sorry, yeah, zoning regulations.
Zoning regulations.
Yes.
Zoning and ordinances, you can even add ordinances in there.
Yeah, cuz it's not just a.
Yeah, somebody could have a dump, you know, all over their property.
I mean, like, the one, yeah, I like G too, I do not agree how my neighbor, for me, I mean, I'm completely disagree, dude, if you mess with my property values, I'm.
It gets down to B, we've got.
Now, if I have more land.
And we'll be able to tie this to location or no?
Well, you'll know because from the demo question, you'll know.
Okay.
Well, would be interesting to have a question here, is do you live in an area that has a homeowner's association?
Oh, that's a good point, Ray.
Because, because our regulations are a whole lot tighter than the township.
Oh, serious.
Yeah.
Right, yeah, but what do we do, like, if you live in, we don't have any control over the homeowner's association, what does that do for you?
But it would tell us where they're coming from for the answer to these questions.
Yeah, okay, so when we ask, do you uh own, do you rent, maybe an option for, do you live in a HOA? Yeah, okay, let me go back to that question.
Cuz if I leave my trash can.
Well, maybe that should preface this question.
I get.
Right.
Well, if we know it from a prior question.
Oh, I see where you're going.
Like, F should be township zoning regulations, not to be confused with HOA and things like that.
So, E is peculiar, I mean, it's very specific.
Okay.
It is.
I I don't know if it adds anything more than F. Or F and G, right?
I agree.
Because you could put deck in there.
Yeah, it's really.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm.
Chicken coop.
Yeah. Okay, alright, cool, so interesting question, I got, I went back to the one we're on, create about their living status and or have uh option, do you currently live in HOA? Okay.
Nice.
Alright, please rate your opinions on the following statements on a scale of one to five, with one being completely agree and five being completely disagree. Uh, I feel uh protected from incompatible developments near my home, I feel, and then B being, I feel protected from incompatible developments near my business.
Please just feel like planners speak to me.
Yeah, what does incompatible mean?
And protected.
Freaking gravel mine.
Well, it is.
My grandfather did.
It's in the eye of a bull, for sure. I guess this one would just give, does, it's very planner speak, I agree, but it gives us the planning division of pulse on how we're doing.
So, I would answer A as completely disagree. What do, what would you do with that information? You don't know, right?
No, well, I think if you, if I got back, uh, if if we got back this and. And I feel protected from incompatible developments, and we got a lot of fives, I'd be, oh shit, we need to take a look at our. So, I would do, I mean, there are things to be done, the thing to be done is, like, right now, one thing that we were actually talking about today in the office. You guys in Bath Township have taken what now of, when Jim Folds was here, I mean, this is like extremely progressive at the time. Not in the political sense, like in the land planning sense, um, single-family home is a buy right use in every zoning district in Bath Township. Nowhere I've ever worked has had that be a thing, right, because in like. Usually you'll have industrial district and commercial district, you guys, Jim Folds decided to simplify it, which I think there's a lot of like, good in that. But, so like in your development districts and your HDD di- districts, um, which were your more commercial districts. You can put a single-family home right next to Myers.
Right, you're gonna have mixed use.
That makes me feel like, as like, if I'm a business owner and somebody can put a single-family home next to me, I don't feel protected at all from. Um, incompatible land uses, so to me, if I get a bunch of fives on B. I'm going into the commercial district, I'm removing residential options.
So, one, one thing that you can do is make this an open-ended question that says, do you feel that there isn't. Whatever the correct wording is, in incompatible development, you know, near your home or business. Or bath-based business, and then have them describe it, and then that gives you richer information as to, among those who, you know, X proportion. Provided a a concern, right?
Yeah.
So, you have that numeric value, and then you can categorize the various things that people are saying. It could be that most people have, you know, annoying neighbors with fences, or I don't, I don't, something, right? They just approved a fancy new car wash next to my house.
Okay, I'm just gonna put Jason's comments.
I mean, is there consensus? I mean, is that?
No, I think that's better, I think it's fair, but I just don't know how to word all that in the moment, so I'm just gonna review what you said and workshop it with them.
I guess what I was saying is if it's, what's incompatible, if it's zoned for that use, and it, you know. That building or business gets built on it that meets the zoning, is that incompatible? If you don't like it?
Well, the logic of zoning is, um. Usually that the whole purpose of zoning is to minimize conflict between land uses. Now, what is conflict between land uses? Like, the one that we like dealt with on Parkway was like, somebody trying to uh have a. Dog training center in their very small property in Parkway, and then we had to be like, dude. What in the world are you doing, this is literally like how the conversation went, you got a dog training center, you live on point three acres. Like, what in the world made you think this is a good idea?
Business on a residential property, right?
Well, they didn't see it that way, though, but all their neighbors saw it that way, they were saw it as like, dude, what are you talking about, I can't train some dogs in my backyard, I thought this was America. And we're like, and then we had to explain to them, like, no, man, like, this is actually really dangerous, really irresponsible, and you're low in property values, you're not allowed to do that. But that's what I'm talking about, like, it depends on, it's a total viewpoint thing.
I've run into situations where somebody has a residential house, and they run like a gravel business out of it, or, you know, a trucking business out of it, you know?
Yeah.
The neighbors, everybody has five or ten acres, but there's trucks coming in down the road.
So, incompatible use. Incompatible still is in the eye of the beholder, because there's some people that say, I've got a single-family home, you cannot put a duplex next to me.
Yeah, that's incompatible to me, right, where most planners would say, yeah, that's fine.
Yeah.
Alright, alright, we'll have them workshop it, I, but I get the gist of it, it's very planery, but I think they're getting at some good stuff.
A new word?
Yeah, it's a word we're using today. What type of an activity should home businesses be able to engage in? This is an interesting one in the context of Bath.
Yeah.
I think it's cool, I have no problems with this one, I think this is a cool question.
I think it's fine.
Okay, alright, four was, do you believe local regulations have helped or hurt your ability to enjoy or improve your property wise?
Sorry, I, just going back to three.
Okay.
Will people understand what a home business is?
Should we say a business right now of your house?
A home-based business?
One of the, those two options.
I think home-based business is typically, typically used.
Maybe a couple examples, like a lawn care.
Yeah.
I'll put examples, we can do that, examples are good.
You could put examples near the customer or in the choices too. Like a daycare versus hair salon.
I think you should rank them.
Yeah, cuz when you say a home-based business, it might be that I run my business out of my home, but like a lawn service. You know, my accounting's all done inside my house, but everything else is.
But are you parking your trucks and stuff there, trailers there every day?
Yeah, what it comes down to is if it's a nuisance or not, the nuisance is subjective.
House up on Clark Road, that they're obviously running a biz- business out of, right next to. Twenty-seven or sixty-nine, whatever that was.
Thank God, that's not.
Well, that's bad, that's the wit.
Clark Road heading toward the wit.
I think I heard recently that the wit is gonna be.
The Wilkins old house.
Yeah, that probably changed hands, that used to be a really nice looking property.
I got a slide for that I can tell you guys after, alright, so, um.
But I, I think somehow you should score these, is uh, how big a concern is it?
That can be useful. What type of activity should home-based businesses be able to engage in? Score from uh least concerning to most concerning?
Yep. Do one of your little matrix thing.
Yep.
And and uh.
Okay.
Four is kinda open-ended.
Yeah, I mean, it's just open-ended, I I, I'm seeing a pattern here where they're ending each section with open-ended, I don't think that's terrible. Again, if you're trying to get through this freaking survey, you're just not gonna do anything, and if you got a hot button topping.
Yeah, I still would ditch the word regulations or say.
Okay.
Yeah, ordinance.
Ordin- zoning and ordinances.
Okay. Noted. Control frames. Okay, alright, demographic questions, these I don't think are as controversial, we did talk about, so I got three and four, moving those midway through.
Yep, the second sentence, I think, we're gonna delete.
Um, these are.
General question is not required.
Agreed, like, whatever.
If they're not required, I don't put them here.
Yeah.
Well, we're, we're moving the demographic questions, so we're not gonna have the section, right?
Right.
So, the only question that we don't account for is, what age are you?
Well, we don't account for the map one either, or number one on the other page.
No, we talked about moving that to the.
In the beginning, yeah, move to the beginning, sorry, I say, make a note. To.
But we didn't address age.
Or is it go move to um middle, or what's that section called, housing?
Yeah, move to. Move one to beginning, we're moving three and four to the housing section, and we got information on numbering them. And then, all we haven't addressed is, what is your age category, do we just move that to the beginning as well?
Yes, I would say yes.
I mean, do we wanna know more about people, so we have age, other things that we could add in this section would be. Uh, are you married, do you have, I mean, we've got the number of people in the household, right?
Yeah.
That doesn't necessarily tell you about.
Family status.
Do we need, do we need that for the comprehensive plan now?
No.
I don't, I don't think we do.
It's like, house across, not across the street.
The age ones, I'm born in.
The age ones, of course, yes, but.
Who lives in, there's always, always two cars in the driveway, there's a car in the street, I don't know how many people live there. But the people who live in there are are ages, they should be on their own, so I don't know, family members or, or renting a room, I don't know.
You want a families to ask question in there?
What role of the service?
But I, I don't think they'll, I don't think they'd answer, they don't answer that question truthfully anyway.
Alright, so we still got a couple points to go through here, I'm gonna put, move, um, question two to beginning. Just to knock those out. And then we talked about moving that one sad question. Which I can't even remember, um. Oh yeah, that, what characteristics or aspects of Bath Township could be improved and that's kind of open ended and now their minds, they're thinking. To the end, but we didn't wanna end on like a bad note. So is there anything positive we can think of?
Can, are you gonna leave prompts for the open ended question? Because we left, we said no, because we're, they've went through the whole survey.
Yeah, I think their juices are flowing at this point.
So how about this, rather than what wa- ways the township can be improved? Just creates one, are, is there any other feedback you'd like to share with the township as to?
The direction we should go, that we plan for the future or something.
Yeah, if people have got things to gripe about, they'll put it there. If they got things.
What characteristics of Bath Township have we missed? What more could we know?
And, and I think we, uh, if you wanna talk about the main street parking again, but it would be, it would be interesting, okay.
I'm good on it.
Okay.
I think we got everyone's like an agreement. George, what did you wanna know?
Go ahead, George, yeah.
So like, let's say, uh, the guy that just bought the restaurant turns it into a pub and they, he. There, there is availability for more parking on that street and we do, the township does have property down there. So like if they did have bath days or they did have the courser run, uh, do you remember what that's called? The courser, anybody remember? It's a, it's a, it's a cross country meet we have in.
Oh, it's the, it's the Breckman's invitation.
Okay, yeah, and it, it fills this community. I mean, there's like no parking anywhere. You know, do we wanna expand parking downtown for that? Would, you know, would that be helpful?
Property that used to belong to the DDA, is that what you're talking about, George?
Yeah, or, you know, on street parking.
I'd rather say it develops.
For events like that.
The police will have.
Probably one of these schools, school, the, the school have a huge parking lot.
Oh, that's completely full. The church parking lot is full. Everything is full.
Eighty to a hundred teams running that day.
That goes, that goes into the planning area, though. Plan for eighty now to twenty.
Okay. I, I just throwing it out there.
But no, I mean, does anyone want a question about, how did, you give a general question?
Like, do you think parking availability is an issue in Bath Township?
Yeah.
I would say no, but it's, it's.
Well, I mean, you can always ask.
You can always ask. Does anyone wanna add?
Survey down though.
Yeah, well, we cut a lot of questions out, I mean, we did. So do we, do we want a general question about is parking availability an issue in Bath Township?
Yeah, and if everybody says no, then we know that that's something we don't really need to work on in the next five years.
We're talking about the future though, not now, so.
Yeah, but you're always gonna.
You could phrase it that way. Do you foresee in the future parking availability being an issue in Bath Township? No or yes? It takes two seconds.
I mean, what's the future? Five years, right? That's what this plan is.
In the next five to twenty years.
Yeah, so I don't see sixty five point three percent of people say that future parking is bad. Is, is not positive. What are we gonna do with it? Where is it?
Well.
Who are these people?
Do a parking study.
And what are we gonna, yeah, what, what are we gonna do with them?
It's the senior center that sucks.
Three, three, three days out, you probably would get a lot for the senior center. If you asked it that way, you would get a lot like, yeah, parking's an issue and it'll all be related to.
Which we're gonna address anyways.
So then we're gonna get elevated rates because.
Yeah, but no, he's right. Even think about that could skew the whole question. We could be like, oh shit, we need to develop that DDA law and park. We're totally misreading.
So, so if you do add a question, where can be, where can parking be improved in the township and then make it open ended? Then you get, you ask a question because apparently we want a question about parking.
Senior center.
And then it's just open ended and so people can say the village sucks or the senior center or the senior center or the village center. Village center, whatever, or the, the community center. Park Lakes is not great for parking.
Yeah, it is. That's another area where I could see.
I'd say we may just leave, leave it off there.
No, I, I'm, I like that. You think about that, like where is parking an issue in the township? And then there, there's a box where you can put where it's an issue and then the second option is it's not an issue.
One of the things that we keep hearing and time and time again is adding on to the senior center. And yet, when I look at the number of seniors in Bath Township and I look at the number of seniors that use the senior center. There's a disconnect.
I ain't one. I don't think that has anything to do.
Is that anything that we should be studying in the master plan?
I think that's more strategic plan. The board's gotta figure out what they wanna do with the senior center.
It's one of their committees. I, I have an answer for that.
Do you?
Yeah, not now, cause we're doing surveys.
Okay, I think the last. I think it wasn't one, oh yeah, industrial.
Industrial development.
Yes.
We need to address that somehow.
Okay, I think in the development section, we need a question about industrial. I think that's all that, that comes down to. And I'm, so I'm just gonna put, and we'll let them workshop it and you'll see it next time and we'll put at the end, or I'm gonna put up here at top. This section needs a question about industrial.
Can you put a question in there? Should we have any more?
Storage.
Storage, storage facilities?
Well, I think we should be fishing about what we'd like to see the Webster Road between Drumhiller and the freeway look like.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Yep.
But what control do we have?
That, that was gonna be my question. I'm not sure.
We can always deny special use permits.
Yep. I mean, do we want a bunch of warehouses there or do we want some?
Town, the board does.
Well, the board wants tax revenue as well does the school.
I'd like, I'd like to see a new township, right? Township already crossed where you can rent out.
That's negative tax revenue.
I wanna see a helicopter service.
Finished yet, so you, then you, you can rent out some of that space. Then you take this, turn it into a senior center and then you take the senior center and turn it into the library.
Doesn't generate.
Everything's right here.
I think that senior center is smaller than the current library.
I think you're right. I think George, to your point, like they definitely need to do. A whole and out, uh, out, a project that's an outcome of the strategic plan is a campus study.
Yeah, that was actually one of our specific goals that we listed yesterday. We actually spent quite a bit of time talking about.
But the cap, the comp plan is supposed to be outward looking, not like how are we gonna organize our local government? It's what we doing in the community.
Right.
Okay, I think we got it. I think we got a good sense. Guys will get a nerve stab at this. I'm gonna try to get this all worked out before our next meeting. Cause we have, we do have a gap week, so we got a little bit of time. A gap week's where we don't have to make a package or have a meeting.
Yeah, right, yeah, we got extra, extra weekend.
Yeah, we got extra weekend there because of how the calendar is out. Um, cool, we wanna move on the agendas.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, why don't you know where we're at?
I don't, I don't either.
Okay.
New business, new business, new business.
We don't have any.
We don't have any public.
No public comment.
No.
Report from the planner?
Um, I got some dates coming up that, uh, a conference I'm going to, but I can let you guys know at the next meeting. If you guys are interested in going to the, uh, planning conference, uh, this year, which it sounds like we got one. We got two, uh, it's in, I, did you see it's in K Zoo this year? Yeah, Comva Zoo. Um, I don't, I don't think I, I, the supervisor just told me about this conference. He wants me to go to. It's a four day conference. It's right around the same time. If I'm going to that, well, I probably won't go to the planning one. I, I can't be having like multiple weeks in my conferences. But if you guys are interested, sign up. I'll get you signed up. Those tickets are open. I'm still keeping my eye out for the, uh. National conference for twenty twenty six, I have any tickets open.
So just a quick question, I, I used to get the Michigan Planner Magazine.
Okay.
So I'm not getting that anymore, yeah, so.
All right, let's make a note to call, um. Or, uh, make a note to email, um. Matt and see what's up with that. That's true. I haven't got mine in a while, now that you mention it.
I think, I think I got mine recently.
I got mine in a couple of weeks ago.
I haven't got one in months, actually.
Maybe they're just putting them right in the recycling in there.
No, cause I would give them and usually if I, with some of you guys, they'll come here and then I'll just hand them to you. I've been getting it in a while. Okay, we'll call Matt, we'll see what's up.
I must have had.
Cool.
There's also a, how do we look it up?
Are we in commissioner comments? So, well, do we wanna, chair, do we wanna go to trustee report and then commissioner, cause we're kinda, I'm, I'm getting.
That's fine, that's fine. Go ahead, Kate, give us an update.
Uh, well, as I mentioned that yesterday, the board of trustees met and part, as part of our strategic planning process did a. Six hour workshop. I know, it was kinda long, um, mainly goals, kinda identifying goals. Um, vision, mission, kinda talked about, um. Areas that we need to improve on, what our values are to go into the strategic plan, but, um. One of the, a couple of the things that came up tonight were definitely mentioned, like Miles had talked about some, um. Strategic marketing that was definitely talked about, um, yesterday. Support for grant writing for projects that we wanna do. We talked about, um, doing a campus study. Facilities study, which goes along with, we're kinda currently in the process of doing some staffing assessments. And then, you know, what good is it if you find out you need to hire more staff, but you don't have any place to put them? So that facilities assessment, that was all talked about yesterday. Um, as well as like the signs and stuff like that, signage came up as well and something else I just thought of, I was gonna say, but. It popped out of my mind while I was talking. Um, so we did that. We spent quite a bit of time on that yesterday and then we'll get the. Draft of our strategic plan back, um, in a month or so, I think, for review and then final changes. I think in September. Um. Yeah, and it's, it's interesting for me to go through both processes. Cause I feel like even though they are very specific, there's certainly a lot of overlap and it's also helpful for me to hear the issues that come up here. Um, and then to be able to share those with the board of trustees from the planning perspective. We then also had an actual board of trustees meeting last night as well, so basically just moved in here yesterday. Um, in terms of relevance to the planning committee, planning commission, uh, we. Advanced the ordinance about the private roads and drives. I think we talked about that last time, but that advanced to the next step. Um, we design, we introduced the designation of, uh. A building, a new building official and then Miles as the zoning administrator. And I think that was the bulk of it. Yeah.
Planning.
Yeah.
What was the reconsideration of the flag policy?
Long and sordid, but, um.
Oh my.
Ultimately, I, it was reconsidered because of a meeting a month ago when. Um, action was originally taken on the flag policy. There was confusion about. Who had made an emotion and what motion was made and how it actually played out. And so Ray had made a motion and then, uh, Sherry made a motion sort of in the middle of his motion and, and then Ray's motion never really got acted upon. One way or another. So Ray wanted the chance for his motion to be actually made and discussed.
What's the flight policy?
Uh, as voted on a month ago, the flag policy is that. The only flags that can fly here at the township building may be the US flag, state of Michigan flag, a police department flag. Or a fire department flag.
No MSU flag?
No MSU flag.
That's some bullshit.
Make sure you put that in.
I'll pass your opinion so long, um. Yeah, so nobody could, the, the other policy that, that Ray had considered was to allow requests. So community members could make a request for a certain flag for a certain day or date or period of time. Um, and that, the poli- that policy to take the requests was not supported in the reboot last night. It was a four to three vote. Both votes were four to three.
Interesting. Interesting. Anything else you wanna report?
I think that's it.
That's it? So did you, yeah, well, you, you wouldn't have taken any action on the, uh, zoning law change or zoning ordinance change?
Well, we, we moved it from first reading to second reading, so we advanced it, I guess. Yes, it was a five to two vote.
Oh, was it? Okay. All right, anybody got any comments? I think we've probably discussed.
I have a comment.
Oh, go ahead.
I just wanna bring to our attention a very dangerous road situation. That was brought to me by a, uh, a person down. Who lives down the road. Apparently Angle Road, uh, between Cliffs and Howe. Has both a curve with an unusual, uh, grading. Uh, that is, um, challenging for people on motorcycles and that's. Quote, several people that I know have, uh, biffed it in that, that roadway. So it's, it's apparently it's an unintuitive, I, I, I don't drive motorcycles, so I have no idea what I'm talking about, but this is, this is a guy down the road. And so it's, it's unintuitive in terms of, like, if, if you go around a, a track, the dip goes into the. Yeah, I think it banks the opposite direction.
Oh, yeah, it would.
And so I've, I've just, I promised the neighbor that I would bring it to your attention. For maybe consideration of a warning sign or something, cause you're not gonna regrade it or.
Miles, what's the minutes, time and minutes into the?
What time?
You can text me.
I've only gone in the ditch one time in my life and it was right there.
Oh, really?
Yes, I was sixteen, but none of us. It was right there.
In a car?
For the conditions, probably.
Where'd you hide your beer cans?
Sixteen.
But George, if you do, if there's some consideration, then let me know so I can report back to the.
Thank you very much.
Anybody got anything else?
I wanna thank, uh, you guys for getting that information out. It was nice to see this early.
Yeah.
So, uh, appreciate that very much. Appreciate all your hard work.
Thank you. I'll just one thing, um, there's accessory dwelling units. Have you heard about that?
Yep.
Yeah.
From Maryland.
From who?
Maryland, the University of Maryland. Not, the state, the state of Maryland, they have, they have webinars all the time. What kind of?
Yeah.
This one's Thursday. I've signed up for it. It's Thursday, Thursday noon, I think.
Yeah, they've done some real good ones on that.
Yeah.
An accessory dwelling unit.
Yeah, we talked about that a long time ago.
Yeah, we talked about it. I mean, it's a hot topic and, um, yeah, if you, Ray, if you wanna come and watch it here, I'm happy to sit down on that on Thursday. I think we're free Thursday at lunch.
Is that, uh, aren't there other terms for that, like mother in law?
Eighty, well, yeah, mother in laws, we use what's currently permitted by special use permit in Bath Township right now. Eighty U's though is when, when people think eighty U's, like the cities that are most anonymous with is Portland, Oregon. Cause they didn't, like Ann Arbor is huge on these.
Yeah, yeah, they are.
Is that a rentable space?
That's typically how they're sold and marketed as a way for, uh, single family homeowners to. Increase revenue streams and provide, especially like in the Ann Arbor content, context, like. More affordable housing for a student population since Ann Arbor refuses to build up.
Right. Well, quite, quite often the elderly couple lose to the eighty, you know, then they rent the house or they.
The house to the family.
To the family.
It presents options.
Yep.
They, it can be worrisome and the feedback that we get on these along the rural areas like. Yeah, we don't have a family compound being ran here. Like this isn't gonna be good from a code enforcement. So, so I think. Like Ann Arbor is a different place in Bath. I'm not saying they wouldn't work in Bath, but you'd want a different suite of regulations on them.
What's wrong with family compounds as somebody who's probably in the process of developing a family compound?
Family compounds, when done right, can be a great thing for that family. When done wrong, it can turn into an unregulated trailer park.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Devaluing everybody within a half mile radius of them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Cause Lansing is pushing forward on.
Eighty U's, yeah, essentially something to do.
Yep.
I mean, they're popular and I think they're a great thing and a great tool. It just has to be, it's like the devil's in the details with them.
Oh, absolutely. And you gotta have this, a certain parcel that's.
That works for, yeah. There needs to be like qualifying factors.
Yeah, there's a lot of qualifying factors.
Okay.
All right, anybody wanna motion to adjourn?
I got one thing.
Oh, go ahead.
So I got some information on solar grants that came out through EPA, the state of Michigan. Are we looking at anything like that? Do we wanna, I can forward information on, on, on solar stuff.
Residential or commercial or?
It's geared towards residential. Which I don't know much about, so.
Hmm, interesting.
I'd be interested, but.
The state has like. The state has like eight point eight million dollars to dish out to, um, what is it, underprivileged communities or, you know, low-income areas, which I don't know if we would need that, but sometimes in these grants, that is a really wide swath.
Yeah, that is, can be.
Yeah.
This money from the feds folding down to the state?
Is that gonna get clawed back?
So are they gonna, yeah, that's, that was.
Just got it.
Okay, cause I heard an article the other day, and I think it was by NPR, that a lot of that money is gonna get clawed back if it's not used up by like November. Like that, you gotta, like, if you, you gotta schedule a contractor now.
This is, so the grants for this one are due by September, so.
So probably not, I don't know, okay.
I guess the money's already here, but I don't know.
Well, I don't know.
At, at this point in time, I guess, anything could happen, right?
Yeah, I mean, they are clawing back some money, that's a problem that SCUMA's doing with right now, with some of the grants paying for their stuff, they changed the terms and are clawing back some of it.
Yeah, even though the money's in the, in your account.
Yeah.
Same with schools.
Yeah, pulled back out.
I don't know, I could forward that.
Yeah, it's been interesting, I'd be interested.
We could take a look at it, but, there's so many grants, it's, I don't want to forward, forward everything, but I, I get so many of them. And I don't even know if there's an interest in that, I just was bringing it up because you guys were talking about solar earlier in the year, and table and that, but.
Yeah, thank you.
I think grants related to parks, I, I mean, would be interest, not possible, I mean, I think sidewalks, of course, uh, non-mortarized pathways.
Anything on parks, send it to me, I'll get it to Taylor and the rec coordinator.
I mean, it, it's geared towards resident, residential, but I think it's also community-based residential, so I don't know exactly what that means.
Anybody got anything else?
I moved to adjourn.
Second. There's a motion in the second to adjourn. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hearing none, we're adjourned. Yeah, I can, I can show up here Thursday noon if you want to.
Yeah.
Twelve to one thirty is what I did.
Oh, so that house on Clark, so in the winter, I was driving, and, um, some truck, or like S ten.